Good evening. I'm going to call to order this Monday, August 22nd, Board of Commissioners meeting. Welcome everybody. This is your meeting and we appreciate your interest and appreciate you being here. We'll start off with the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Shore. Mr. Shore, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you would, join me. Most heavenly gracious God, Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you, Father, for allowing us to be here and, Father, we just come to you and ask you for your discernment and your guidance and leadership. Lord, as we make the decisions for this county, we ask God that you would just allow us to make those that would be pleasing to you. And, Father, we ask that you would just go with this county, go with the state, and go with our nation. Lord, that you would just bring us back to you and where we should be. Father, these things we ask, in your holy and righteous name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was for a test.
We actually put one, I forgot to say anything, but we put some flags here and we've got them back there. That way, we can face you, you can face us, and nobody's turning their backs to each other. My apologies for that.
Okay. Next is Ashley Moore, Lexington Chamber here? I don't see her. Okay. Commissioner McClewer, if you'd recognize our veterans.
Sure. We have any veterans with us? Please raise your hand. All right. Thank you for your service. Are any of the veterans here that haven't received a Davidson County pin? Yes, sir, I'll come up and I'll give you one.
Davidson County veteran's pin.
It's a veteran's pin. If I can find it, there it is. It's nice, you go on your lapel, go on your tie, it says Davidson County, and right at the bottom it says veteran.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you, man. Appreciate your service. Thank you. Appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, sir. Thank you.
If you have not done so, if you want to speak at the public address, please sign up. For the public hearings that will follow, just for the public address. Due to the anticipated length of the public hearings, I'm asking that they be moved to follow the deliberation agenda. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Not. May I have a motion second to adopt the amended agenda?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Second motion. You got a second. Cast your vote.
All the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of seven zero.
Jason, we have anyone signed up?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Are there items for consent? Are there any items to remove from the consent agenda for discussion? If not, may I have a motion second to approve the consent agenda?
Motion approved.
Got a motion approved?
Second.
Second. Cast your vote.
All the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of seven zero.
The deliberation presentation by Piedmont Triad Council, PTRC, on regional workshop development board, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to ask Matt Dolge from the COG to come up. You guys may remember the last meeting we talked a little bit with the state folks from Commerce about the notion of realignment, realigning workforce development with some of the regional zones they had proposed. Matt runs a COG here locally in our region, and again, that's one of the places that, if you'll remember, Mr. Mottershead discussed with us in terms of a potential scenario of a place for workforce development to land should we not want to run it ourselves anymore. So I'm going to turn it over to Matt to let him let you know about the COG and what they can do and what go from here. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. It's always great to have a chance to talk, quite frankly, to the board of one of our members. Davidson County's been a great member of ours for a long, long time. Of course, Commissioner Truell sits on our board as our vice chair and has done great leadership and represents Davidson County in Kearnsville every month so you folks can feel very confident in how you're represented with us. I appreciate the chance to talk to you about workforce. I know the state has been pushing for and looking to consolidate workforce areas around economic zones. We see ourselves as an option in that, but we also realize, quite frankly, that this is a decision for each county to make. We honor that decision. Wanted to just give you a little bit of information on kind of who we are and how we do business and then answer any questions that you might have for us as we move forward. Our workforce area, so we have a 12-county region, obviously, in the triad. Seven of those are currently in our workforce area. We've got a budget that's just a little bit south of $4 million, and our workforce board has about 24 members on it. Representation is based on the population for each county, and we're talking to you folks because of the state efforts and, quite frankly, talking to other counties right now about the possibility of joining in with our workforce board to see how we might extend services there. I wanted to give you just a picture of kind of how we view workforce development. We see talent and workforce as the key to success in economic development for this region, and what we know is if you look on a national level, international level, the places that are winning in economic development are the places that can win in talent. So we actually have joined our workforce development programs and our economic development programs into one unit at the regional council, and those plans that drive our economic development efforts also drive our workforce and our talent efforts. They're really designed around two areas for us. One is helping folks get trained and find jobs. We've been doing this for a long time, and I don't have to tell you folks that we are on a cycle of economic development in this region where we've lost manufacturing, gained manufacturing, and lost jobs and added jobs. What's a constant is we need to have our current population ready and willing to go into jobs and work for jobs we have for employers. And so that's kind of a main aspect of what we do, and that's what funding from the federal level comes down for us to do in our workforce centers and our job link centers. You have two of those centers here in Davidson County, one in Lake Tonton and one in Thomasville. We have seven across our counties right now to serve folks to find jobs if they walk through the door, to help them figure out how to get training. Our major training provider in every one of our counties is a great partner in the community college system. They're a great asset for North Carolina, and we work closely with the community colleges in all of our counties that we work with. We also have a service provider. You folks are doing the services yourself in Davidson County, and the county is that service provider. For all of our counties right now, we have to bid that out by federal guidelines, and Goodwill Industries is our partner. So we pay them to be that contact point for individuals who come in and want service. So we pay them, they hire staff, and provide that service to individuals who need jobs. So that's kind of one key part that I think you folks all probably have a really good picture of what you're doing right now in Davidson County. Another piece for us that we see is really key and has been especially over the last about seven years is services to employers. So the bottom line is, what we know and what we've heard, we've had studies done, we had a workforce alignment study done across the region that we conducted about five years ago. You know, we don't have to tell you that employers are having a hard time filling positions across a wide range of services, a wide range of jobs across the region. So we really focus on those services to employers. We put in a huge data component, and I think one benefit to our larger region and the resources we have, quite frankly, is we've been able to really build out services to employers. I'll give you an example, and we've got information that I know we've gotten to Casey and that you'll have in front of you. A part of that is about a 10-page summary that we had. An employer comes to us, and they say we can't fill our jobs. So what can we do with that? Either we can say, oh, we have a job there, or let's talk to the folks who are coming through the door at the workforce center, and obviously, that can be effective. What we try to do though is help them understand what their problem is through data, look at the types of positions they have, the type of training it needs, who their competitors might be. We do salary analysis to see what folks in those positions are being paid across other employers in the region. We try to help them figure out where they can access those pieces to do training, to get maybe their current staff into positions to better serve the jobs that they have. So we help them analyze where they are so that they aren't out there blindly, you know, just trying to hire folks and move people into positions. I'll give you a great example. Unify is a huge employer across this region in textiles. They called us in Yackton County and they said, you know, we're having a turnover rate of about 120%. Yeah, that's a huge number that we just couldn't even fathom in our past. You know, people went to work and they stayed places, but they were having just incredible turnover. They couldn't fill their jobs. And so what they had done, basically to fill the gaps, is they had gone to a temporary employer, employment service, and they were just taking folks in from this temporary employment service and fill them into positions. And that is an answer that got folks in the spots for them. But we went and did an analysis of that, and we talked to folks who were coming in. We looked at their salary structure, we looked at their work structure to see whether it was attractive to folks who wanted jobs. And, you know, what we found is that when they were hiring folks from temporary agencies, those folks were seeing those jobs as temporary. So they were coming in and saying, well, I'm a, I need some money, I'm going to work for a month, and then I'll find the next best thing. I might make a dollar more somewhere else, and I'm going to go to that next best thing when that comes around. And so we kind of gave them the opportunity to look at their systems and see where they might improve things in order to make themselves more competitive to bring in a workforce. So I'd say those are kind of the two pillars of what we really try to do, and I'd say that business services, folks, that focus is really a difference that we can do because of the resources that we bring. I know one of the things that you've got to look at, and I told Casey, I said, it all comes down to, on the one hand, you have a program and you have complete control over it, and you know what that is, and you're putting county dollars into it, so you're making an investment in that yourselves, and it's nice to have that control. I think on the other hand, you probably have, based on kind of the larger resources that we would bring to the table, there's services that, quite frankly, we can do, and this is not, understand not being critical, you've got great staff. Pam does a great job with your program. We know her, she's a partner. But because of our resources, we can invest in things and be involved in maybe a strategic level in a little different way than your folks are involved right now. And so it's just a balancing act of kind of what you value and where you feel like those pieces will best serve the folks of Davidson County.
I have a question.
Yeah.
You had mentioned several things about resources that you could provide for the county, but you didn't mention what resources you could provide that we don't already do.
Well, I think, so, let me give you, so COVID, we've all just, you know, employers were dealing with folks having to stay home, closing the doors, having to deal with how they keep folks healthy and make their staff feel like they are safe coming into work. Quite frankly, because we have some resources and our overall figures are quite a bit higher, you know, what could our approach be to that? Most workforce areas that were smaller kept their workforce facility open. People could come in the door, they could ask for services and that type of thing. But what we were able to do is strategically say to businesses, what's your problem? And they were saying, we don't understand the kind of scope of COVID. We've got to be able to train our staff and make them feel safe, and we've got to know how to deal with customers. So because we had resources and could go out and find resources, we got with a national training entity. We developed online training that we made available for free to any employer in our workforce area. And they could have their staff go in and train, and it was for management to say, what do we need to be doing for our staff within this structure? And then they could also have a separate component for their staff to go in and look at that and be trained on how to deal with the public and what they need to be scared about, what they didn't need to be scared about, to put their minds at rest so they could come back to work. If they went through both of those pieces, we also invested in masks, and so a reward for the businesses to be engaged with the training was that then at the end, we gave them two masks that were washable and could be reusable that they could have for every staff member. They had up to 500 people on staff. Another piece we did in COVID was, what's a piece you couldn't do? So one of the main components that a lot of employers wanted to do was have job fairs. You couldn't do that in person during COVID because they don't want to bring large crowds together. So we took some of our resources and we invested in online job fairs. So employers could engage with folks online, they could break out and have separate meeting rooms, so if I was on there and I wanted a job, they wanted to talk to me, then they could put me off into a separate private meeting room, and we could have an interview and do that type of thing. So it's just that, that's one thing I would say, is that we, because of our larger structure, we're dealing with strategy, and so we can look at different pieces we can bring to the table for folks. I'll tell you another piece is that with my management team, they're constantly looking at not just what the federal government will give us through the state, but we're writing grants and we're going out and finding other funds. So just over the last two years, we brought in more than $2 million in additional funding into our area above and beyond what the federal government was giving us. We brought in $700,000 from other workforce areas that couldn't be effective during COVID, and quite frankly, we could be effective because of the pieces that we put into place. So we do, we go out and try to find additional resources and bring those in, quite frankly, to be a value add to our members and the folks who are in our region. I do have, I apologize, I know we sent some things, and we have a packet for you, and you can see some of those additional funding sources that we brought in over the last couple of years. So again, it's not to be critical at all of your team because you've got great folks who are doing, working hard for the people in Davidson County every day. I've got a management team because of our size that is constantly looking at partnering with the state, partnering with foundations, partnering with other folks across the United States to bring money in, and that's what we see as part of our, you know, what we're tasked with from our members, is to add value and to bring in more dollars. So I appreciate that. It was a great question. Thank you.
If there's a business that wants to locate in this area and they come to you folks, how do you decide what counties?
So I would say that we don't get involved in that. So our role that we see in that is being staffed to you. So I don't have, my economic development program is designed around building the infrastructure for folks to be successful. You've got...
We've got an economic...
You've got a recruiter.
Yeah.
So when you recruit, you're bringing folks to the table, and they want that to be confidential because they're, quite frankly, they're competing with other folks to bring those folks in. What they'll do is they'll engage with us. We consider that to be confidential. We develop data or engage in whatever way you'd like us to in working with that employer. And then once you've landed them, they're on the ground, we'll bring the tools together and go meet with them to make sure that services are provided for them, they can bring folks in. We do have a couple neat pieces also invested in, so we have two mobile facilities that we can take to employers. I'll say that we have a big bus, we can do 17 laptops on there and set it up as an office or a classroom space. I'll tell you, unfortunately, when we invested in that the first time, the reason was, all the closings were happening in textiles and furniture and tobacco and all of those. We need to be out there meeting people where they were. We feel like that's very important. And so we bought, we invested in that bus, and when somebody was closing, we'd go and put that on the facility so those folks didn't have to go find services, we'd take the services to them. We still have that, but now it's used for things usually like job fairs. And we also have a smaller one that's just a hotspot, and we can do 20 laptops and we set tents up, and we'll go out to Food Line parking lot on a Saturday and find folks who we may be able to engage in workforce system and get them into jobs and do pop-up job links with that. And those pieces are also available for all of our partners. So, you know, if the county had needed those things, then we would also make those available for other things for the county as we do in other areas. It's been, for the last three Saturdays, it's been at a minority and women's business expo, so it's been in High Point and Greensboro and Winston-Salem. Again, just providing services to those folks there.
How many folks visit it?
I can't tell you this weekend, or these last three weekends, because I haven't been there with it, but we can get you figures on that. It's interesting, we take it to festivals a lot of times, so it's been here for the Barbeau Festival and things like that. What we found is the bus is, quite frankly, sometimes it's too big. So you've got to have a big place to set it up, you've got to have a flat area, and sometimes it can be a little intimidating depending upon where you take it. So we got that smaller, you know, which was basically a van, we can take that anywhere. So both of them are completely self-contained.
So is your area regional?
So we're regional. The counties, obviously, that, you know, I don't want to get into too much history, take up too much of your time, but, you know, we merged regions 10 years ago. Before the merger, I was with Northwest, which was Winston-Salem and five counties, and Piedmont Tribe was Greensboro and the counties on this side. And we had always done workforce, and it was just, you know, COGS choose their services they provide, and the Piedmont Tri-COG had never gotten engaged in workforce. And so it's kind of a splintered group over on this side of the region where we put it together. Rockingham had always joined, had already joined with us, and Caswell has joined with us. I will tell you that now we're having discussions with Alamance and Randolph and you folks. Guilford is not going, I think, to join with, again, the state's talked to them, we had some discussions about three years ago. They've got a little different philosophy than we have on how they deliver the program. And so I think it, you know, made sense for them to maybe not come with us. They, obviously, we want to serve people, but we don't see it as an entitlement program. We see it as an economic development program, and they see it... We see it as an economic development program, and they see it as a little more of an entitlement program, which is, again, is fine. It's just a different philosophy.
So I guess my question should have been, how many maximum, how many counties are you going to have in your control?
So I'd say we have seven right now, and we're in discussions with three. And then those are simply decisions for you folks. I think the process would be, at this point, if we expand our area, counties would ask to come into that. We would sit down at that point and then talk about what the structure of the board would be, how all those pieces would go together. And then if you folks wanted to get in that discussion, you'd still, at some point down the road, have to make that decision yourself, saying, okay, we're comfortable with this structure. We're comfortable with how we would be served, so we're going to make that move. We aren't asking anybody to do that right now. Right now, it's really just interest, and we want to see who's interested, and then we'll get in those discussions of the specifics of it. A big part of it is just board structure. So, you know, I will tell you, I think you have a pretty sizable workforce board. Ours is not. So we have 27 people on our workforce board right now. I'm sorry, 23. We'd probably look to be around 30 if we added counties. And then we just break down those seats based on population and some of the federal guidelines on who needs to sit on that board, and then the counties make those appointments to the board then.
So that brings me to my question. If we did come into your group, our employees, would they, would you absorb them into you? Or would they just be out of work? Or how would that work?
So I think that'd really be just part of the discussions with you. What we commit to are two things, and we've been through these mergers before. We've added counties. We've added, you know, other areas. First, we always intend to, we always have, run the program for the dollars that we have in the program. So we aren't asking the counties for extra money or any of that type of stuff. We're going to use the money we get. We're going to run the program. When we make a transition, we want to make sure that it's not people losing their jobs. And so normally, we would work with the current service provider, which is, in this case, is the county. So then it comes down to whether the county wants to continue to be a service provider under the program or whether you'd just like us to move that over to another service provider. And we could do either of those. But again, that's a discussion. That's something you bring to the table, and we're willing to work with you on however you'd like to work on that. I would say that moving forward, long-term staffing is based on the funding of the program. And so we look at where you are. We want to make sure we're bringing everybody along if they wanted to. Some of those may want to come work for us in the management structure. Some may want to stay in service delivery, and so that could either be if the county kept doing that, or if our service provider did that, they could move to that service provider and be employed there. So there would be a couple of different options. If we add counties that we're looking at now, you know, quite frankly, even one or two counties, I would probably add a position at our office just from a management structure, because you start getting into a pretty large number of counties. We also, so our business services folks work for us. We don't contract that out because we feel like that's too important. We feel like we need to keep control over that part of it. And I will tell you, we hold our contractors to a very high standard. And so every year, we're looking at the numbers and making sure that they're producing what they need to do. Goodwill's been a great partner. The first year we were required to bid this out, because we used to be like you, so all the staff was COG staff previously, and then the feds changed the law and the state required us to bid that out. Our first provider was a big national group that bid on it. They were the low bidder. They'd done workforce work. After a year, their numbers weren't good, and we kicked them to the curb and voided the last two years of that contract, and we found somebody else. We're going to make sure folks are served. I will tell you that, you know, we feel a great responsibility if we're asked to work for our members, as we know that that's your folks. We know they're your dollars, and we want to make sure that we use those widely, wisely. So all I can say is, we would take on the folks, and we move forward, whether it's through retirement or folks finding other positions. At some point, we would have to get to a level of staffing that the funding serves. And quite frankly, I don't know where that is right now. We would have to get into, and again, that'd be part of this process, is look at how many folks you have, where they are, kind of what the funding is, and then we move forward with that.
That's a long maybe.
No, we would not, we would not cut anybody loose immediately. I would say that. We would not do that, because we know those are your folks. Some of them may want to stay with the county. Some of them might want to come to us. There'd be options there, but we wouldn't cut anybody loose through the transition. We don't think that's healthy for the process.
Would you-
You said that there are seven counties in Salem?
Currently, yes.
And that includes Rockingham and Caswell?
So Caswell, Rockingham, and it's kind of a loop, and then Winston-Salem is kind of in the middle there. So we go Davidson, Surrey, Yadkin, Stokes, Caswell, Rockingham, Forsyth. Of course, Davie has same, obviously operates with Davidson Community College, and so we have worked with Davidson Community College well there in the past.
But did you say Davie?
Yes.
Did you?
Davie. I'm sorry, if I didn't, they are. Yes, certainly, they certainly are.
I got it. Thank you.
And again, I will say, we've been to Alamance County and talked to them. Randolph County has talked to us as well. Now Montgomery County, I talked to Montgomery County, and, you know, they dropped out of the Piedmont Tribe partnership a few years ago. And they have real close, I think, real close economic links to Moore County. And so I told them, I said, we want them to be where they're comfortable. If they think they're best suited to be with Moore County, then that's the great way for them to go. So they are not going to come with our area. Again, they're great members of the COG. We want everybody to be where they feel comfortable and where they can get served well. So, and with you folks, appreciate the opportunity to talk to you. We're going to be friends at the end of this, no matter, you know, whether you decide to come with us, whether you don't decide to come with us. We want you to get good services and appreciate you folks as members.
You know, one thing that I got out of this, from our last several meetings we had, we talked about we're getting less funds each year. We're having to consider closing down parts of this and using administrative monies to operate the programs, these type of things. And one thing that Matthew mentioned at one of our meetings, it might have been at the COG, I don't remember, but the monies that we get, you know, if we don't use, and we use all our money, I'm sure here, but if you don't use all your money, it goes back. The money, when it comes into the group he's talking about here with COG, it doesn't go back. If another county doesn't use their money, if he sees Davidson County needs that money, he brings the money to Davidson County. But the money's all used with the people, as members of this workforce group. I've talked to a couple of the counties also, and nobody's told me to say this, but this is the truth. The state's going to keep lowering the monies each year to, they force us to do something. And they're going to put us in a group somewhere. Our best bet, we're members of the COG. We're mid-members of the COG. We pay to have a seat on the COG. This is a service that COG offers us. And, you know, from the get-go, whatever we've got in the budget, the COG would not have to be in the budget if we were a member of that. So that's what I was going to just say.
Thank you.
It's hard to understand. It's hard to, it's hard to separate EDC and workforce development. Some people think if they've got workforce development, that they're going to say, hey, if Toyota wants to come in, he might send them to the mountain area. That's not it. That's our EDC that does it. Oh, he does workforce development. He tries to prepare the people, and if Toyota comes in and says, we need some people, he's got to try to find the people that's qualified and fix the batteries for Toyota or whatever. But that's, I just want to say that.
You said you teamed up with the community colleges. Would that be, maybe we're Davidson County, I mean, if I was an employer here in the county, how would I get my folks, I mean, they don't want to drive to Greens?
So the community colleges are a training provider, unless they can't provide a training. So there are, like, there have been a couple of times, folks wanted, some of our community colleges don't do truck driver training, and so they have to go somewhere else. If there's a train that's not offered, we'll allow folks to go other places. But they are our preferred provider. They're a great partner. And so my expectation was they would still be your training provider here, you know, across the board in Davidson County, and I think they're your youth provider now. Is that correct?
Right.
And so again, they could still be a youth provider for you if that's the way that, you know, they wanted to go, if they want to be a part of that process. You know, North Carolina, it's great that we have the community colleges. They're a huge asset. And I will say, one thing we learned in our talent alignment study is, we don't always do a great job of letting individuals know the different places they get training. And so they may look at Davidson and not see something they can get, or a class may be full, so they've got to wait. And we think that one of the real pluses that we're looking at moving forward, we actually put together a website that's talent attraction retention, and a big piece of that is education, is, you know, if Davidson is full, and I could go, you know, next door, go to Forsyth, I'm in Lexington, and I could zip up at Forsyth, and they've got openings, then we're going to make sure that we get folks as quickly through training as they can so that we can get them into jobs. And the bottom line is, we know employers are thirsty for folks to come and work, and we've got to do the best job we can to find good options for them. But Davidson is awesome. You've always had great leadership there at Davidson Community College, and they are always doing innovative things, so they've been a great partner in Davie.
You mentioned that there's seven. You're talking to three other counties, which, if all three join, would be 10. Do we stop there? Are y'all going to keep trying to get other counties involved in it?
Yeah, so one is the counties that are there, and when I say, so if all three ask, they could ask to come in, I will say that it's incumbent on our seven saying yes. And so everybody's got to be happy with the arrangement in the end. You've got to be happy with the board seats and feeling like the structure is going to serve you, and our CAG members have to be happy with that. And so we, you know, quite frankly, we can't expand unless our members want us to expand. So I think that's the first guiding principle to that. But the second is, we really see it as a function of economic development, and we think that the Piedmont Tribe is an economic entity in that we've got, you know, urban areas and then the, kind of the rings around that that function together in an economic system. And so I've never envisioned going outside of our counties as our members of the COG, and that would really be kind of where we'd be going. Then again, with Montgomery, I told them, they're in the COG, but I think if you guys are comfortable that way, then you need to go with where you're comfortable. So, yeah, I don't think it would be something, again, the only one left at that point is Guilford. Unless they change their philosophy, I don't think that they would be, I don't think our other members would be excited about having them onboard, quite frankly.
Sounds like the resources may be hard to pass up.
And Commissioner McCord, just quickly, I apologize. This is just a list of some of the other grants and things that we brought in over the last couple of years, and so it gets to your question about some resources for that. And then with that business services piece, this is just an example of one of those that we did for a company that shows you the data piece that we brought to the table to kind of help them figure out some of the issues they had around their employment issues, so.
With regards to the operation of the workforce development, the COG would be the supervisor, not the county?
So in effect, in the structure, the COG is staffed to the board. So you're appointing members of the workforce board, as would the other member counties if you were in our workforce area, and they make decisions. That's the consortium, and then they choose that staffing. We've been chosen as staffed to the board. So again, it's not necessarily our program. It's still the county's programs. We're just being hired to administer that program for the county.
How does the county follow through with administering the program if it's the county's program?
So once you join the consortium, then it's on the consortium to administer it properly.
Goes back to the, goes back to the board.
You're kind of off the hook. That consortium then is on the hook for making sure the money is administered properly and everything's done the right way there.
So if we've got two facilities here, one in Lexington, one in Thomasville, be it to the board to decide whether or not we're going to keep one or about?
Yeah, although I will tell you, again, because of our history, we understand Davidson County, and we understand that's very important in Davidson County, usually is that services are offered that way. If the county wanted to keep as a service provider, again, that would certainly, and the main issue with having workforce centers right now tends to be the cost of the facility. It's not necessary staffing. So the state has gotten out of the game of leasing a lot of space to have workforce centers around the state. And so we're either finding partners that we can have facilities with or renting space ourselves. We're fortunate in that with Goodwill Industries, they have a lot of facilities around our counties, and so they can have folks within their facilities, or we can go into other facilities and rent those. An example is, we've got rented space up in Mount Airy.
And we own these facilities, so you wouldn't have to lease them.
Yeah, so if the facilities are available, then it's just a matter of putting staff there and working with partners to be there, and that's, quite frankly, that's pretty easy for us to do. And so I would not say it's been a problem. We understand, again, we understand the mechanics of what Davidson County would like, kind of through their history, and that Lexington and Thomasville have been kind of traditional hubs for services, and I think that, you know, that would be the guiding light principle for us in that.
And if we did have facility, the COG would decide how many people they would put on to work there. Is that correct?
With the service provider. So again, remember that we aren't the boots on the ground. We have a service provider. Now, we direct them in providing the service, and so we would work with them. But there are also other partners there. So we would work with, it could be a community college, it could be vocational rehab. There are other folks that are partners within that structure, and so we would look at who would be in that facility, but certainly-
If you had dollars that you were vying for, and you had Forsyth County with five members and Davidson County with one, what chance would Davidson County have in a vote from the board?
So I will say that we serve people where they are and where the need is. And I'm not going to say that every year, everybody gets the exact dollar figure that they were, you know, if they were an individual county, that they would have gotten, because sometimes there are more needs in some areas. Sometimes there's a big closing somewhere, and so we need to be able to take resources where those are. And I will tell you that, you know, we're intent on serving everybody that needs to be served. I don't think, I've got my workforce director and assistant director here, that we've ever had a time where we've had to turn down folks for services who've come through the door because we're going to figure out how to serve folks. If you have a big opening and there's training needs, and we've got to take the bus there, we've got to have staff with the bus, again, that might be staff that's not normally in Davidson County, but we're going to take them there. So I said, it's not so much, we don't get into competing over dollar for dollar where those are going to be. What we look at is where the need is and driving dollars to where the people are, where the businesses are that ask us for services. Again, I would say, I think that, again, a positive being a little bit larger is, if you have those big needs, so, you know, like an Edgar or someone like that that all of a sudden has a huge need, we can bring resources to that and kind of reallocate resources temporarily to take care of needs with large employers or with closings and things like that.
What kind of decisions does that board make? Excuse me. What kind of decisions does the board make?
So there are two boards, and I know you know this because you're involved closely, but you've got the consortium. So that's, you'd have a member of this board who is a consortium member for Davidson County. They sit with one member from each of the other counties. They do the things like, you know, look at who's going to be the service provider and have general control over the funding. Then you've got the workforce board, which you're appointing, and they make the decisions over our programming and direct us in how our programming works. So it's not unlike you folks direct, you know, staff here to do various programs. We've got the workforce board to do that, and that's just the federal structure that's set up, is the workforce board makes decisions around what programs we're going to have, and then we deliver on those programs as staff, so.
The workforce board would have how many members from Davidson County, based on population?
It would be based on population. Again, we can, we haven't done those calculations because we haven't really been asked. But if we get into discussions, then obviously, again, we'll get into the specifics of that and give you some numbers. And again, at that point, if it doesn't work out, then there are other points within the process. If you ask us to engage, we're going to engage with you and get into discussions. You've still got the power of making that decision down the road whenever it is.
It stands to reason that we wouldn't have the same power to make decisions that Forsyth County would.
Um, I mean, I'd say there, there are more numbers, but I will tell you, that's never been an issue with any of our counties, and I think you can talk to, and they, I just, I don't think they bring that to the table, at least we haven't seen that as an issue. It's not, you know, what are we getting, and what are we getting, it's, it's more, what are the services, what are the needs, what are employers telling us across the region, and that's.
One of the things that we were told is, if we decide to go with cog, there's no turning back to get back into county's business, it's just a, a done deal.
Well, again, and so, again, I think the process is one, I don't think that's a decision that needs to be made yet, I think there would be a lot of discussions before that was ever done. It's a state decision on what workforce areas are out there, and so, that's why I think, that's not, that's, that's above my pay grade. I can't tell you how the state deals with that. I know that by federal legislation, the governor certifies workforce areas. Like when WeO was approved, as you remember, they asked folks what workforce area they wanna be in, and the governor certifies that. So, I guess there, the state does have control on some level. But in the end, by WeO, the, the highest level of control's with you folks. So, I mean, this is an allocation that's based on Davidson County and your population, and you decide what workforce area you wanna be in. Um, the state can, I, I guess they could make that difficult on you, again, I don't know, that's above my pay ra- grade, but, um, you folks are the ones who can make that call.
They're already con- controlling us to some extent, 'cause they keep cutting the money every year.
We faced that this year, we've, and we've been facing it like everybody else, I don't wanna, you know, I wouldn't try to explain, that's one of the reasons we're out there looking for other money all the time, is because.
Speaking of money, the money that the county puts into our workforce development, uh, local, we wouldn't put that into the.
That's not, yeah, that's not our expectation, we've never done that. Now, again, if you wanted to do something, then that's up to you folks, but we operate under the funds that we receive, and then we go out and get other funds, so.
Alright, thank you, I don't have anymore.
I have, just one quick question, you keep, I, I, I think you refer to them as providers. You have to submit the, submit, send us out for bids, and what, if, have you been successful at doing that?
Yeah, so, um, by federal legislation, then by the state, the state required that you bid this out, and you folks have done that too. Um, I, you know, uh, quite frankly, my, my understanding is that you didn't get a, a bidder on, on your, your county, and so, the county kept delivering services. We bid that out, I said, our first respondent that we took, we weren't happy with after years, and we changed, we bid it out again. We got other providers interested, and we went with Goodwill, they've been a great provider for us, and so, we've stayed with them at this point, but we will have to bid that out again, because that's just the law, I mean, it's like anything else, it's like your, your audit contract, or your, you know, I think it's a, it's a three-year. So, we're required every three years to go out for bid again on that, and the workforce board makes that decision then on that provider.
If we were to decide to do this, how long would it take us to implement it, to where our businesses could use the, uh, service?
The, kinda the date that they've looked at and kinda pushed, I think, across the state, is they'd like everybody to be in place by the next fiscal year, so that'd be July first of next year. And it's a process, so they have to jump through hoops, and again, we, we would have to have discussions and come to agreement on things, all, all of our boards all have to vote. So, I think it's good to have a little bit of extra time, but I think July first is what we'd be looking at for a transition.
Okay.
But it, don't we need a commitment by September?
I was letting Matt get done, then I was gonna touch on that, I was just gonna, I was gonna do timelines here, then.
Well, I will tell you, the, the state has talked about a timeline, and when we've talked to our other folks, a- again, they, I'm not saying they can't force you to do anything, but you need to operate under your timeline.
Right.
Um, is, their first timeline was being of August, now they've moved to September, and the reality.
Their preference.
Uh, it's a preference. Um, we'll work with you however we like, and I, I think, again, what, what we would need, if you wanna get in discussions with us, is just simply some action by the board to say, we'd like to enter into discussions about the possibility of moving into your workforce area. That would trigger us, and then we would start having discussions around structure, board con- you know, board content, and all those types of things.
Anybody else? Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Really appreciate you folks having me, again, if we can help you in any way, just let me know.
Thank you for the handout.
Thank you, Matt.
Alright.
Mr. Chairman, um, staff seeking direction on this issue, as far as this letter of intent, what the next steps in this process is, is exactly that. Um, Matt touched on it, the state's seeking by September fifteenth, um, this board to endorse or approve a, a letter of intent, which essentially means that the two parties, cog and the county, would start to come together to form some type of agreement, um, which gets us to that July first timeframe. So, that is where we are today, or we either, we either let the state know, thanks but no thanks, and we'll continue operating on our own.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, um, you know, last meeting, when we met, and, uh, you know, we, we talked about this at length, and, um, you know, I had some reservations, after, uh, listening to the, the honorable gentleman come up and speak. Uh, I like the fact that we hold the same philosophies, I like the fact that we have, uh, a stand-in, uh, relationship with them, and, uh, they get along with, uh, Commissioner McClure, you've, you've, um, got along with the, the membership of the cog, they've, they've been good with us. The problem is, it's inevitable, you know, it's coming, and we're being forced to, to, to kinda move into this, because we've been so effective. And we've used the money the best way, and we've, we've been efficient, and we've brought great jobs in, and, uh, and we kinda mentioned that as a whole group before, it seems like we're getting penalized, because we've done such a great job. So, um, you know, this is a hard decision to make, I, I feel like it's one that's gonna be made for us if we don't make it, but I do feel, uh, more comfortable with the cog than I did, uh, talking about it before, and I just wanted to make that public, thank y'all.
You mentioned inevitable, it's not inevitable this year. In other words, if we decide not to do it this year, we can do it next year, or the year after, is that correct, sir? That's right. The, we have a workforce development board, do they come to any down the decision on this discussion?
Pam, did you understand? Has the board, Commissioner McClure's question, has the board made a decision of where they're at on this?
Come on up here, Pam, and I can't hear you. I'm old, and I got bad ears.
I thought that was the case, but I wanted to hear it from you directly.
Yes, sir, back in, was either March or April, I believe, the workforce development board voted for a resolution that we sent to the state that said that the workforce development board wanted to stay single county area, and did not want to relax.
You hadn't said anything else, Tom. Thank you, ma'am.
Pam, one other question, how many employees do you have?
Um, right now, in Thomasville and in Lexington, we have, I believe it's eight.
Eight. In both, or together?
Oh, both together.
Okay.
When I told Casey, they, as shorthand as we are in the county, I mean, these folks need jobs somewhere else in the county, I don't see that being an issue. And I don't think he does either, as long as they, uh, hold the credentials for the other jobs. But Pam, and I think y'all have done a, a, a good job over there, but I'm not so sure we're not penalizing our businesses by not utilizing these folks' resources, because, again, the bigger you are, the more resources you have. And the bigger the companies are now, the more, I mean, me and the chairman was just at Edgar the other day, and they're having a terrible time. Staffing the plant that they just built, so, some of these resources I hear that this gentleman may have, uh, would probably help them a lot. So, I just wanted to say that if we make a decision to move this away, it's, it's not intended for, uh, any insult of our staff, okay?
I think everybody, I've, I've talked to staff, I talked to staff last week about it, um, because I wanted them to hear it from me, just so they would know and not hear rumors. And, um, I think that the staff, and I know that you all are gonna make the best decision for Davidson County, which is what you all need to do, so.
So, you think they're understanding of, uh?
I do.
Okay.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
You've always been super supportive, and, you know, we've got a good representative from you all on the board, so, I think our staff knows.
Thank you, thank you, Pam.
You do such a good job. I'm gonna take this opportunity, 'cause a lot of people don't know this, but workforce developments, Pam and some of her staff stepped up to really be a big asset to us during this situation with our inspection department, and I want to personally thank you.
Amen.
Not only as a commissioner, but as a citizen, 'cause that's what it takes teamwork, and thank you for that.
I think our staff knows, 'cause it's always been my philosophy too, that I work for the Department of Davidson Works, NC Works, but I work for Davidson County. So, when Mr. Smith calls me and says, "Help," I say, "Where?" I, anyway.
Well, it was a good call.
Hey, and I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, I had kinda forgotten about that, and thinking about the workforce, I mean, Pam herself has been down there, um, helping us out, so, yes, thank you, sir, I didn't.
Well, Pam, if we did decide, would you, you would still stay somewhere in the organization, would you?
I, 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 I don't know, I think that's one of those things, that it, it's something that's gonna have to be worked out. You know, all depending on which way you all decide.
Thank you.
I don't know if that's a danger.
Davidson County. I thank you for a no answer.
Thank you, appreciate you coming up.
She's been trained by us. I'm good.
Okay, Casey, uh, what is the pleasure to board as far as directing?
I got another comment. If we don't decide to do it this year, we can stay in contact with the counties that do decide, and at the end of the year, we can see what, um, benefits they have gotten out of joining the cog, and then we would have something concrete. All we got tonight was, we can do this, and we can do that, not, we have done this, and we have done that. But that would give us an opportunity to look at some of these other counties and see exactly what they got, when they decided to go to workforce board. Certainly.
Um, Mr. Chairman, or Casey, one, can we, uh, uh, the gentleman mentioned that we could request to talk to them, or, um, I'm not saying go with them, what I'm saying is, is can we, I maybe get together with them, kinda see where, 'cause there's a lot of unanswered stuff, because we're not actually talking. Can we get with them and talk with them, and see kinda where things would go, and how staff would be, and can we do some of that stuff without entering into an agreement with them, or can?
That would be part of making the agreement. Step one is a letter of intent, saying you want to pursue the agreement.
Yeah, a letter of intent don't do anything, but, yeah.
I guess that's what I'm asking.
That's what they're, I saw the state ask before the moment.
We do this letter of intent, we're not.
No, we're still not in, we're still in negotiating stage at that point.
I, I would say we need to do that, just to see where we're at.
I agree.
I agree.
That, that, that way there's, and my understanding is, there's no commitment there.
Not at step one?
We just see where we would be on the other end of.
That's right.
Because we're gonna get into conversations with the cog about the two centers, how much federal money there is available, how that gets, uh, distributed, um, where do the staff, how those issues line up, whether, you know, all these issues that'll come up will be part of creating that agreement.
Lots of, uh, answers and questions, or questions and answers would be from the letter of intent.
Right, right.
Then, does that need to be in a form of a motion?
No, we're not, not on here for a motion.
No, we just, uh.
I, I mean, if it's, if it's a mail to the board, maybe step one, I mean, again, this letter will be very basic, it's just a letter of intent, that's what I understand Mr. Mottershead, Mottershead would, is requesting. Yes, staff, staff seeking direction tonight, if you wanna do the letter of intent, we'll draft it up, we'll send it to Mr. Mottershead, and at that point, we'll, we'll be in conversations with him, Matt, about step two.
That decision needs to be voted on?
Correct.
Okay. Later, not tonight.
We don't have to do it tonight, we still got till the fifteenth, we can do it at the information meeting in September.
Oh, okay.
You're just saying the letter of intent needs to be voted on.
Well, correct, but I mean, I, it could be voted on tonight, or it could be voted on for September, but staff is seeking that direction.
I was just referring to the agenda where it says this item is for information, the direction to the staff.
Right, well, I mean, again, that's, let me make that clear, what I'm looking for is the direction to me to generate the letter, if that's what you wanna do. And the letter, and that, when that, when that motion is approved and voted on, we will generate the letter, get it to Mr. Mottershead, and we'll begin the conversations of step two. That we'll be back to this board at some point in time with that agreement.
But it does not bind us to anything.
No, the agreement will bind you, and that's coming later.
During all this letter of intent, you can see what kind of, would be my guess, you could see what kinda stuff he provides, uh, go look at some of the facilities, I mean, there's a lot of stuff.
Could he keep our staff, could he, yeah.
There may be things that are deal breakers.
That's right.
That have to come back to this board and be acknowledged, and say, here's what's being offered, are you okay? I mean, there'll be some movement along the way. But step one's pretty simple, it's the letter of intent.
Do, so, do we need a motion, or just the consensus of the board to move forward?
I'll make a motion, we move forward in letter of intent, and so.
Okay, we got a motion and a second.
Who has a second?
Whether we need it or not, it's done, cast your vote.
Chuck R., is you good with that?
Yes.
Okay.
At least we'll get answers one way or the other.
I think you'll like what we see.
Motion carries by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Commissioner McClure?
Yes.
Would you, counting, proceed with the library card signup month proclamation, please?
Alright. We have a library card signup month, now twenty twenty-two, and, uh, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas a library card is the most important school supply of all, whereas signing up for a library card is a first step toward academic achievement and lifelong learning, and whereas libraries play an important role in the education and development of children, and whereas library programs serve students of all ages, from early literacy to homework help, to college research projects, and whereas librarians lead the way in creating inclusive spaces and developing diverse collections for children and people of all backgrounds to connect and learn together. And whereas libraries bridge the digital divide by providing a full range of information and services to children and adult learners. And whereas libraries continue to transform and expand their services in ways that meet the needs of the communities they serve. And whereas libraries open a world of infinite possibilities through resources and services to help people pursue their passions, and give students the tools to succeed in school and beyond. And whereas approximately seventy-two percent of county residents have a card with the Davidson County Public Library System, and a portion of those are students in all three counties' public school systems through the Student Access Program. And whereas libraries serve as an important source of electronic and physical materials. Now, therefore, the Davidson County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim September, two thousand twenty-two, as Library Card Signup Month, and commends its observance to the citizens of Davidson County, and I make that in form of a motion.
Do we have a second? Got a second? All in favor, you need to have a. Debbie, just two, one, two, three. He ain't right.
He ain't right.
Help me out, how many, two, one, two, three?
Karen, move on in here, I'm gonna step back here, Don, don't sit in the chair.
Okay, alright, man. Come on, little babe.
Debbie, tell my glasses are straight or not?
They're straight, one, two, three, one, two, three.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One, two, three, thank you.
People worried about this glare.
To understand what he was saying there.
I just wanted to thank you all for recognizing National Library Card Signup Month.
Absolutely.
Uh, she should've brought us an honorary.
We do this every year, and it's, uh, intentional, it happens around the same time the school year begins, uh, and that is because we know that reading is foundational to education, and that's part of what, that's a core part of what we are at a public library, is reading and literacy, literacy. We really strive to make sure that children are having fun, and they're, they have a lot of choice in what they read. And we know that the more that they read, the more they learn, and studies have shown that growth in comprehension, and spelling, and grammar, and even empathy, and it reduces stress levels, all these correspond with increased levels of reading. Um, the more they read, the better they'll perform in school, strong readers make strong learners. And the beauty of the library card is it opens up a collection of books and lots of other resources for anyone, not just so that you can afford to purchase them. So, thank you for this, thank you for your support of the library, I wanna put in a little plug, because the, uh, Lexington location is gonna have a, an open house October twelfth, and you're all invited to come, and you'll get a card about it, but, um, it's intended to that day, and please come and see the beautiful job that the staff has done, um. Um, the public work staff and everyone has done to make it a really beautiful, uh, facility that I think will serve us well for years to come. And, and we appreciate your support with that.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Cause a citizen asked me this and when you were standing there, I just thought about it. Does a library, do we have like a literary clubs that come to?
Like a book club?
Book clubs and stuff like that where they sit and they read books and discuss the books and this type of?
Yes, all different ages, yeah. Adult clubs.
Or adults.
Mm-hmm, adult clubs.
Can you send me something on that?
Yeah.
Cause I can get back with them if they were interested in that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is it on the website? Does it, they explain that on the website?
It would, yes. Um, each location does their own programming. So, you'd have to go into the, um, on the website, there's a, there's a link to each location. So, you can go in each location and it'll show you their calendar of events. But just about every location, I believe, has a book club and some, some of them have them for all ages.
I've seen a lot from Denton, too. They, they have some fun events, yeah.
Yeah, they do.
Thank you, she.
Right, uh, there is one that is starting to meet at the governmental center of employees. So, I'll get you that specifically, too. Um, we have one that meets at the Goose and Monkey as well. So, I'll take out to the community.
Just that Goose and Monkey.
They meet everywhere.
All right, got National Senior Center Month. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Wofford, does she read the proclamation?
Before I read this, I want to, uh, thank the, the board for, um, putting me on the aging, the senior aging committee. I'm on there with Commissioner McClure and we meet every month either at the, at the life center or at the senior center. And, um, you know, it's just, we had a wonderful meeting this past week at the life center. And it's just wonderful to find out all the work that both groups are doing for seniors and advocating for seniors. And part of what's happening across the country and that's the services that we're, uh, we're having and the changes that we're having is due to committees like this. And so, it's, I just wanna thank you for that. This is National Senior Center Month proclamation. Whereas older Americans are significant members of our society, investing their wisdom and experience to help enrich and better the lives of younger generations. And whereas the Davidson County Department of Senior Services has acted as a catalyst for mobilizing the creativity, energy, vitality, and commitment of the older residents of Davidson County, North Carolina. And whereas through the wide array of services, programs, and activities, senior centers empower older citizens of Davidson County, North Carolina to contribute to their own health and well-being and the health and well-being of their fellow citizens of all ages. And whereas during the pandemic, Davidson County Department of Senior Services has been a community partner in ensuring that our most vulnerable citizens, people aged sixty-five and older, many with underlying medical conditions are cared for and able to stay safe and healthy. And whereas the two senior centers in Davidson County, North Carolina, affirm the dignity, self-worth, and independence of older persons by facilitating their decisions and actions, tapping their experiences, skills, and knowledge, and enabling their continued contributions to the community. Now, therefore, the Davidson County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim September two thousand twenty-two as National Senior Center Month and call upon all centers, citizens, to recognize the special contributions of the senior center participants and the special efforts of the staff and volunteers who work every day to enhance the well-being of the older citizens of our community. Adopted this the twenty-second day of August, two thousand twenty-two, and I offer this as a motion.
You got a motion? Do we have a second to approve? All in? Cast your vote. Is there anyone here from senior services?
Katie, she's right there.
Hiding back there, Katie.
Call of the votes are in and that motion carries by vote seven to zero.
Uh, your chair is going.
Okay.
One, two, three. One, two, three. What are we doing to you?
Yeah, but that was a long pause in between.
Sorry, I was trying, I was trying to set this down a little bit.
Well, just like cheese.
I just wanted to take a second to say, say thank you. Um, this is not just a job for us. This is something that we take very seriously and, um, you said that very well. Um, so we just want to say thank you for taking the time to highlight, um, all the things that we provide to the seniors.
And y'all are still in need of Meals on Wheels folks?
All the time.
There's one out in the pilgrim community. If you live out in that area and wanna help, Meals on Wheels is very rewarding. Sometimes that's the only person that, that individual will get to see. And there have been cases where the Meals on Wheels folks have actually intervened and saved someone's life.
Many times, many times.
It's a, it's a very good service. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner, meeting schedule? We have a motion to adopt the Monday night schedule and adopt the resolution?
Tell me. Second.
We got a motion and a second. Cast your vote.
Call of the votes are in. And that motion carries by vote seven to zero.
North Carolina, NCACC Legislative Goals Process, Ms. Harris, will you leave this off, please?
Back in July, we have this on in front of y'all. And we solicit, you asked me to solicit information from our department head. As of right now, we've got, uh, some from Tisha from the Senior Tarheel Legislature. We've got, uh, a goal from the library system, a goal from the county attorney's office, a goal from the sheriff's department, and some goals from the health department and one from the tax department. And with your all blessings, with that's what we have, unless you have anything else, I can submit those for approval through the NCACC.
What is, what's the timeline?
September the twelfth is the deadline.
Can you send that out? Has everybody received those?
I can and, and we could, if y'all don't mind taking a vote or at least doing a consensus on the September first meeting.
Okay.
I can put this back on so everyone could see them. What I might do is just send them out in an email form.
Okay, yeah.
So, y'all can see them in an email and just tell me if you approve. They look like good goals to me. Um, the sheriff, there's, there's one they're working on that has a piece of legislation that's taking away where his jailers can get their certification while they're doing their schooling that first year. And something about this legislation is taking that away. Um, the, um, goal from the tax department was for, um, the appraisal of nonutility contractors that, or generators. So, it's a little bit long, but I'll send it out. Tisha had several that had came out from the, um, from the Tarheel, Tarheel legislation. The goal from the, um, library was to not cut state aid to libraries. Tisha's asked. And I think that's something that they've brought forward for several years, just is so their funding does not get cut. So, they, so they don't have to cut funding or, or services that they're providing. The, um, goal from the county attorney's office was to eliminate filing fees on any lawsuits that are filed by the counties throughout the state because basically we're just paying ourselves.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, so, and that was the one from there. I told you about the goals from the health, or from the sheriff's department. Um, the goal from the health department was to increase funding via the general aid to county line to allow local health departments to fund individual gaps in their county and to, um, they want some language changes in environmental health specialists.
Yes, yeah.
That would help that.
Yeah, yeah.
Those were two.
Absolutely.
I was gonna ask about that, but I've been submitted.
Go ahead, send all of these back out to you and I'll put them all, I'll just put this item back on for the first. So, you guys can just give, unless there's anything else you wanna add, we can add whatever you'd like to.
I'm gonna ask Commissioner McClure. He's got probably most experience up here with, with those type things. Anything for you that you can see that we need to?
No, any, any goals that we send forth, they'll separate them into the different, uh, committees. And then that, uh, legislative goal committee will, um, consider all the goals and pick, uh, half a dozen, five out of there, I think. And to go on.
And in previous years, they've started that process in January.
Yeah.
They have expedited it this year. So, it will be starting the third week in, in November.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
They, they let us know that at the conference last week.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to actually add one, um, under the Operation Greenlight, uh, program that I had mentioned. Um, whereas we're asking the state to actually fund a VSO because in this state, we only have a hundred and fifty veteran services officers. And that equates to about forty-seven hundred veterans per VSO. So, uh, one of the things with Operation Greenlight, along with honoring veterans, uh, is there's a legislative piece to that or a, a lobbying piece to that to see if the state will, would actually fund, uh, a VSO for each county, uh, which would double the number that, that we currently have. So, if it's in agreement with the rest of the board, I would like to add that one as well.
And a timeline allows for, for you, anybody that has any ideas on legislation to submit prior to November, correct?
What, they have to be submitted by the twelfth. So, I could load everything in there.
Well, of September.
September twelfth. So, but I mean, that still gives us the September first meeting. We actually meet on the twelfth.
Okay.
I mean, I could pretty much load everything that y'all have told me to. We could put it back on the twelfth for a final discussion. And if there's anything else that comes forward that night, I could do it for midnight.
That sounds good. That sounds good. So, if anybody has anything.
Did you send this out to Trish as well?
No, we've got one from, from Tisha.
I'm saying, did you send it to Trish?
Yes, I did.
Okay, get back, get back with her again and make sure she don't have a goal because I would think she would. At least something.
I will, I send it out, I send it out after the meeting and send it out again a week or so ago.
That's a big smile.
I will, but I will reach, I'll reach, I'll reach back out to all the department.
She's back there.
Is she here now?
Big old smile back there. Yeah, yeah.
She knows what I'm talking, she knows what I'm talking about.
I'll reach out to all the department heads again to make sure we've not missed anything because I did, Tisha sent me something in. But until I sent the first reminder out, that's when they all came flooding in.
Sounds like some of those you read out was pretty good. Oh, yes.
And like I said, Tisha has several, so I'll send those out to you, but, but she sent me a couple of pages.
Okay.
Trish, but I know you have one.
So, you got what you need, dude?
I did.
Okay. Proposed amendment for, oh, well, I'm sorry.
Any of the department heads that are submitting a goal can go find out when that committee is gonna look at the goal. You go up there and lobby for that goal if you want to. So, it's open.
And they've made it available online. So, hopefully they'll do that again this year, too. I'm sure they'll have an in-person meeting, but hopefully they'd have the Zoom meeting that, that folks could attend to as well. Because those were very well attended last year with them being Zoom.
Do, do you think we need to send this out to the directors to make sure that they get this?
I will, I will. I will send it back out, um, not only to Tisha, to Trish, but I'll send it out to all the department heads.
Sounds good.
That's awesome.
Is that proposed amendment to inspection fee schedule, Mr. Martin, Mr. Chalet will lead this off?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna, um, invite Bo, uh, Chalet to come up here, our interim inspections director.
Chalet.
Did I get that right, Bo?
I, I think.
Close enough?
Who got it right, Bo? Come on, who got it right? Is it Chalet or Chalet?
It's like saying Charlotte with a southern draw and no R. Charlotte.
Charlotte, okay. Um, Mr. Chairman and commissioners, you all should have it at your place, um, a copy of a proposed fee inspection, uh, amendment. Uh, there's two pages to this. The front page, um, is a hypothetical situation that we gave to surrounding counties. A, and what is precipitating this is the development of what's coming through in a lot of areas. We're starting to see solar farms, uh, with large numbers of solar panels being installed. Um, our current fee schedule only addressed this by the panel. Uh, and it was a single amount of twenty dollars per panel, which, uh, Bo can speak to this. Uh, on average, residential installations are six to eight panels. So, that kind of, you know, is geared more towards that as opposed to a, a large commercial farm or something like that. Um, but the hypothetical scenario there you see is a total, total project value of a million dollars. Uh, the number of arrays, uh, fifteen thousand panels, uh, and then inverters disconnects, uh, total amount of AC power in megawatts. Um, and then the assumption of the panel size. Um, and so, we did contact Rowan County, Randolph County, Guilford County, Davie County, Forsyth County, uh, which also encompasses Winston and Salem. That's a, a merged department there that handles planning and inspections for both the city and the county. And then, um, also Montgomery County. And we did contact Alamance County as well, but we did not receive anything back from Alamance. Um, but it felt like we had enough good information here to, to make a, a recommendation to you all. And as you can see, the, the criteria for the permits is kind of all over the place. Uh, in some cases, it's by, by amps. In some cases, it's by the square footage of the panels. Um, by the megawatt, as you can see in, in, uh, Montgomery County. Um, and then like Forsyth County, they use a mix of that. There's by the inverters for their new service, the power, all that. Um, and so, you see, under the current charge, applying that criteria to our hypothetical scenario, it ranges anywhere from a hundred and seventy-five dollars to five point six million dollars for a permit fee.
Sounds like five point six is way out there.
Yeah, that, that, that was kind of our take, too.
They buy theirselves.
Right. Um, and ours was landing on three hundred thousand dollars at twenty dollars per panel. Um, so, after looking into this and Bo and I sitting down and talking through this, uh, kind of came through it with a proposal of keeping it simple by the panel for people to be able to understand. Uh, twenty dollars per panel, up to fifteen panels, and then anything past that, fifteen cents per panel. Um, twenty dollars per panel kind of encompasses most any residential, um, application. You know, if you've got fi, a large house with fifteen panels on it, it would cap them at around three hundred dollars for their permit fee. Um, with fifteen cents, um, then that applies to anything to an unlimited amount. So, the scenario here would put, um, Davidson County right in the middle. You see, it drops down to twenty, a little over twenty-five hundred dollars.
I, I got a question for Bo here.
Sure.
Fifteen cent a panel seems awful cheap to me unless you're just walking by and glancing at it.
Uh, yeah, um, that, but again, we, we're trying to find a figure that would put us in a, in a good place.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have to be in here with them. I wanna get what it costs us to.
I understand.
To inspect. I mean, you know, maybe they're too cheap, you know? Now, I take it Montgomery County at five point six million dollars is too expensive.
Yeah.
Um, but there, there's gotta be something. I mean, what do you have to do to inspect a panel?
Well, uh, the particular one that, that's gonna come to our county that, that started this research, there's over thirteen thousand panels that, that are all gonna be hung up on a string that goes to an inverter that converts AC power to DC. So, there's going to be a, a lot of stops made. Um, so, it's looking at grounding and bonding, support, uh, proper terminations of connections, um, work clearances.
For each panel?
For each connection along the string of the array.
Wow.
Uh, it, it, it's gonna be a lot of inspections that apply to, more electrical and building than anything, uh, structurally to support them and then electrically, electrically to get them installed.
I mean, because I'm looking here at fifteen, I guess fifteen thousand panels, correct?
Mm-hmm.
On the hypothetical, yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't know, but it seems like twenty-five hundred bucks is too cheap to inspect fifteen thousand panels.
Uh.
But again, I don't know much about inspecting panels.
Yeah, um.
Now, I can get it three hundred thousand dollars is too much.
Yeah.
I get that part.
Bo, how long would it take you, and I'm assuming you wouldn't do it by yourself, but how long would it take however many to inspect fifteen thousand panels?
How many man-hours would, I guess, would be a good way to put it?
Yes, yes. We're gonna move at the rate that they install them accordingly. That's gonna be, this is all atmospheric, so it's outdoors. However, weather's gonna allow them to do that. And this particular job has relative of twenty-three hundred pile-driven foundations. So, I'm assuming as soon as the pile-driven foundations get ahead enough for the guys to come behind to keep it moving, it's gonna have to be timed and sequenced. And there's also third-party special inspectors that get involved in the pile driving. Um, at over thirteen thousand of those and twenty-three hundred pile-driven foundations holding these diaphragm systems together, it's gonna take several inspections. Each one, we won't know till they actually get moving at the volume that they're gonna do each time. But it could be anywhere from fifteen to twenty minutes per stop, up to forty-five minutes to an hour, uh, depending on how much they can move at a time. And I'm assuming once they start, they're gonna wanna move pretty quick.
So, could you say you could break it down to a hundred a day, twenty-three hundred, since you got twenty-three, uh, hundred piles?
It would be my goal for the inspections department to meet whatever demand they got.
Well, but I'm just trying to come up with a price in my head.
Oh, I got you, I got you.
What's fair. So, if you got twenty-three hundred piles, if you do a hundred a day, if you, and it's easy to inspect a hundred post-driven piles. That's, that's.
I would say it would, it would be safe to say anywhere from fifteen. I would say it would, it would be safe to say anywhere from fifty to a hundred a day, given the challenges they have along the way of installing them.
So I'm trying to put my days back into money, you know?
Sure, sure.
If it's twenty-three days of inspection.
Sure.
Including gas, everything else, I mean, you, you better believe it.
It'll be anywhere from one to three of us that'll invest, I'm gonna guess at least thirty to forty-five days of their, of our time into going out there regularly, and sometimes might even be more than once a day.
Yeah.
If they get up against any holidays or bad weather, um, if they ask for that courtesy, I'm, I'm gonna do what I can to, to facilitate that.
Those panels tied together, aren't they?
They are.
So if, if, if you're going down the line inspecting the panels and one fails, you stop there, you can't go forward.
E- exactly, yeah, um.
They like Christmas lights on it, yeah.
And it, and it may be the type of thing where if it, if it's simple enough, we can address something and keep going and come back to it if somebody's there or not. Uh, and it might mean coming back later, or can you check that tomorrow when you come to look at the next ones? It gets creative in, in helping them meet their goals, but generally we'll juggle what we have to to keep, keep it going, to not let something small hold it up, but still get it done.
You said thirty-five to forty days?
I was, I, I would estimate at least thirty to forty-five days, yeah, month, between a month and two months probably, given the challenges they'll have with fall coming and weather and, and stuff like that.
I mean, I'm thinking twenty bucks a piece for the first, uh, fifteen, and then a dollar or two dollars a piece.
I, I was just doing the math on that. If it was a dollar a piece, the hypothetical would be a little over fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand one.
Sounds about right, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, uh, forgive me for interrupting, but the, in its calculation, the board may want to recall that none of the monies which are spent by the county are likely to be recouped through property taxes.
That's true.
Because these installations are largely exempt by state law from property taxation.
So you're not gonna get any of your money back on property tax? What do we cha- what do we charge for a house? What is, uh, a normal permit inspection for an average house?
For solar panels?
No, just for a house, a house.
Well, the, the base minimum starts at forty dollars and then it, it's based on square footage.
But I'm saying average, what does a average inspection cost for a house?
Inspection?
Yeah, total, everything, five hundred bucks, a thousand bucks, uh, for a building.
Your, your permit, if you were gonna say between eighteen hundred and say twenty-eight hundred square feet, one-story to two-story house, it's low end, five, six hundred bucks, high end, eleven hundred, somewhere in there. And that, that's gonna vary based on stories and square footage, but that's on an average.
Why can't we keep this like that is for the houses and then make a special for these solar farms?
Well, I'd say so, yeah, I'd say probably, uh, twenty dollars a panel plus two dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
Still fair.
Yeah. Considering they're getting by without, you know?
Any property taxes.
I thought it was five dollars, five dollars a panel after that, because I mean, he's saying it's a month, little over a month of work for three of them. And that's if they go every single day and they all three, and that's, that's a perfect world.
That's not all day long, though, that's just a start.
It's not. Um, other than that, it'd be like if you took project value and worked that factor you're talking about into a percentage of the overall project value. Uh, cause it's gonna be different all the time and I don't.
You'd be looking at thirty thousand bucks, I guess.
Thirty thousand ninety, yeah.
And I think.
That would probably pay for overhead, vehicles, time.
The two dollars or the five dollars?
Two dollars.
Okay.
Now, this is for homes and solar farms, right?
The way it, it was, it was worked out would be where it would cover practically for single-family homes and small businesses, um, as well as take it from the cap point to be able to address when we do get them in volume of s- such a magnitude like a solar farm.
Well, these, these are, it says amendments, so what are we charging now?
Right now, it's twenty dollars a panel, um.
It'd be three hundred thousand now for the same size, uh.
Okay.
For fifteen thousand panels, it'd be three hundred thousand.
Mr. Drew, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
And like under the current residential schedule, um, on an average, a home could have two panels on a detached garage that's doing just hot water. That's a forty-dollar permit, that's one inspection, two if they fail.
Is that a motion, Tom?
Yeah, if everybody agrees with that.
Is, hold on, is, is that motion that we're gonna have the twenty dollars and then the fifteen cent for the, the housing? And then we'll have a spec, a separate?
That's, it'd be the same thing, I mean, of course, like I say, if you're gonna put two solar panels on the house, it's forty bucks. So if you're gonna put six, it's forty.
Do they have to be re-inspected any time or just one time or?
Just one time, I guess, you just inspect them one time or?
Generally, yes.
Yeah.
On, on a house, it's, it's one time. On something like a solar farm, it's, is, it does, that's when it gets into so many of them in volume that we have to do them in, in more than one stop. On a house, they usually get them all installed at once, um, and we usually come do a rough and a final.
No, I think my question was if you inspect the house today, all of them, do you have to go back next year or the next year?
We do not, sir. Uh, on- once they've passed those finals and it's done correct and safe, then that closes that permit out and they're done.
Uh, Jason, I see you're doing a figuring, don't worry, give me a, a house with six panels, what are we looking at?
Six panels for a house?
Hundred and twenty dollars.
Yeah, hundred and twenty bucks.
How many panels?
Twenty, max at fifteen.
At fifteen, and that'd be three hundred dollars.
There you go, alright.
That ain't bad, yeah.
No, that's fair enough.
If I put twenty panels on my house.
For six panels?
Yeah.
For six panels?
An average home is, is six to eight, occasionally it's ten. Um, if it were a big house with a complex roof, a little more upper end, they could have as many as fifteen, but then it starts getting a little unsightly and hard to get them placed on the, on those roofs, and you don't usually see that many of those, they'll usually go to like a ground mount type, type application. But those, that many on residential is few and far, that might would speak to a small business. That's why we kind of thought fifteen was a, a safe cap number.
You have to inspect that where the panels can rotate as well as depending on time of year, like in the summer if you south, and then winter time they have to change angles.
If it's something, a sort of a system like that, that's gonna get installed for the manufacturer specs and, and we'll check.
So it's electrical and?
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at the structural part to make sure it's properly supported, w- um, structural integrity doesn't get compromised, and then the, the electrical side of it. Every now and then you'll get a glycol system where it's like a loop fluid that, that sort of.
Jason, one more question. Do you feel two dollars a panel after the fifteen, do you feel like that's adequate money?
Yes, sir. I do.
Okay, to cover cost of staff and?
Yes, I do.
So we're voting on?
Uh, twenty dollars a piece up to fifteen and then two dollars a piece after that.
Okay, I agree with that.
And we got a motion in a second.
I guess, they made the motion or?
You made the motion, bro, I made the motion.
After, after the fifteen?
Yeah, two dollars a panel after the first fifteen.
I don't think I'll put in on my, uh. You're getting money back.
We got a motion in a second, is that right?
Yeah.
Cast your vote.
Yeah, I just think the two thousand and some bucks is too cheap for all that inspection.
It's still fair to the homeowner.
It's still fair to the homeowner's.
Homeowner, yeah.
And if you ever wanted to amend it, you could drop the fifteen down to ten or something, uh.
Right.
The homeowner.
Oh, you, you're doing a fine job, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for allowing me the opportunity.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chalant? You got it, man, you got it. He said Charlotte without the R, I got that. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you for your time. Evidently Montgomery County don't want any solar. I'm pretty sure that's what they're saying.
Sun don't shine in that county.
Okay.
Thank you, have a good evening.
We're getting ready to go into some public hearings on some zoning requests, let's take five minutes.
You taking five minutes?
You want ten?
No, five's fine.
Give me a template, Chuck, I'm gonna have. I'm gonna have, um, ten, help us out, it's a template.
So that is actually what they've scheduled, that they're still working on. And I mean, they, so they've told us, they all say that they, they live in, they have a theater, he's down there, that they wanted to paint it, and we kept telling them, look, we've got scaffolds, and we're like, we don't know what to do, that's more like, it's never scaffolding, it's in the south, we, we had one project we got, so Zach loading it up was just, just got hard to get in.
Davidson County Veterans Panel?
Yes, the, the county's on it, it says, it says death run already been, and they recognize the veterans at every, at every meeting that we have.
So my husband would have to show up?
They have to be here, uh, we have a, we have a big veteran celebration in our little community, and it's about fifteen people that we recognize there, we can't do that, we, you would give me fifteen?
The commissioners do it themselves, and, and I mean, it's something that we don't have a whole lot of, so we have to order them as we go.
I see.
And that project green light that, that Commissioner Shores is speaking about, we're really excited to get that.
I bet, I bet, thank you.
You're more than welcome.
Some phone calls.
Now, if you want, like, let me give you my business card.
Can I see what one looks like?
Let me give you my business card, reach out to me and I, we can check with the commissioners, cause that's part of their thing.
Okay, Debbie, thank you very much.
Normally, that's just one of the things, thanks to what they're, what they're.
Yeah, and you're the clerk to support and the official photographer?
I am.
You are? You're very important.
Hey, that's the field, and it's just veteran across the bottom, and it's just, we've got, we've got company that we can be getting for it, and, and we have regular health insurance with the county deal that we, that we have to provide that.
How do you get that one? You have to do something special to get that one?
Yeah, I have, there's a company. This, we've started, we've started ordering these instead of the other ones.
Okay, well, that's very nice.
Thank you, but yeah, reach out to me and I'll see if I can find out for you.
Alright, thank you. I am. Carl can sing. Hey, Carl, oh, yeah. I remember your name, oh, yeah. I was talking to her about, you know, about her in a facility, and she's, she's just in the, to the memory, and so she's not doing well. Said her that to my daughter, we, we, we talked to her whether she could.
Oh, sure.
At all. Clearly as a male, so, um, they were considered as all the family.
She, she was, she was, she was, and she, I mean, she was showing everything she does.
I know, I know, well, she would need to take vacation, I think, because she didn't like working there.
Yeah.
The reason, you know, didn't like acting in the office, and I said, Mama, but you deserve a vacation, go with it, go with it. Oh, I can't, I got to work. She had a good work ethic, she really did, but she really loves her job, oh, yeah.
Like, um, computers and all that.
Yeah, I talked to her, I said, Mama, I can't remember all the people that, that worked there, you know, big, you know, big guys and stuff, and I said, I do remember Mr. Grandalp.
Sure.
And then she pulled toward him, and she's in there saying, you know, it kind of runs a little bit of the veil, so it's kind of tough to learn about things, but she really liked and thanked him. I took a photo of him, definitely, I have to say, I didn't really want to go, I was a really good student, uh, and when she learned to focus on her voice, she went through that phase. I know she was, she was, she can't say no, you know, and sometimes she called me, Mary, and the second one, all kinds of other things, you know, but that's okay, I don't care, it's all very thankful to you.
It is, it's really.
He said, he said, keep me in my way, and I know it, but she's still here, and I'm gonna be as good as I can.
That's right. She'll wait for you.
That's right. Sometimes I think she's teaching me patience, you know what I'm saying? Just like with that, I was kind of, and so I thought, well, maybe she was teaching me patience. Been a hard couple of years, and they were both always having, you know, you know, like. Yes, they are, so many of them, and when you, and I say it, they're, you know, when you get over eighty-five, you love me and I love you. I mean, you know, you have to go, you know, nothing like that. Thank you very much.
So she's actually, last time we went to Elton, she was like, fine, you're online, they just, yeah, well, she had one of them, she had one of them.
Well, that's a really good age, you know?
Three, one. We had one, we had two. And also. And I'm just. And I don't know. Looked like a guy. Oh, yes, we were. I mean, I only got four shots. A little bit, and he is just like. And we just say, we'll nail down the town. I'm not going to come to the placard. And we just know that. So it's like, it's me, it's me, it's me. Same way we hit those five. We were strong. It's probably cool. Like thirty-one and then. And then the second one and then pass the third. We didn't have the ball. And we didn't want to. So he took the wheel up to the. And he's got a jacket. And we put the third one on now and I said, so can you make it? I mean, it was just so hot in the very. Well, people. Anyway, that we were at the dress. And but. So we took the golf cart out again and I told him. Two hours away.
Definitely don't get a lot.
I know. I wish it. The little guy, he took it back to where we were. He drove it all the way back to the Irish. He made sure he got the camera back, back to the house. Now, when I just walked in, everybody was like. I reached out to Fort Jackson, Randy gave me.
Whoever left their chocolate up here is going to learn a valuable lesson because there's no more of it. James is eating all of it. It's gone. Motion, we excuse.
Okay, call me back to order. Start off with a rezoning request by Dwayne and Melissa G. Hill in Tyro Township containing four point seven two plus acres from RS to RA one. I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Crook, will you introduce the application?
Mr. Chairman, Madam and fellow commissioners, um, we have a request by Dwayne Richard and Melissa Gay Hill to rezone property in Tyro Township, tax map fourteen, lot thirty-six A, thirty-six B and a portion of lot thirty-six. Said property is located on the east side of Tilden Nursery Road, approximately sixteen hundred and fifty feet east of the South NC Highway one fifty intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RS, low intensity residential district to that of RA one rural agricultural district. Mr. Hill, if you'll divert your attention to the screen, um, Mr. Hill is looking at rezoning the property highlighted in yellow. This is Tilden Nursery Road. Uh, I think that's, uh, South NC Highway one fifty is right here. So he approached our office, this is currently RS, he wanted to place double wide manufactured homes on the property. And we looked at the surrounding zoning, his property, which actually extends all the way back here. Mister, Mister and Mrs. Hill own this property back here as well, but there's a creek there. So they obviously wanted to do their development up in front of the creek and indicated they wanted to put double wide manufactured homes on the property. Since there's so much RS along Tilden Nursery Road, we recommended as staff to introduce the RA one district that we're proposing tonight, which would accommodate Mister and Mrs. Hill's needs. We did ask Mister Hill to approach the neighbor. This is an RS, piece of RS remnant to the north. We did approach, asked Mister Hill to approach the neighbor, he did. They were not interested in rezoning the property, so the the application stands that they want to do these front two tracks and a portion of this entirety being this yellow right here.
Cutting it off at the creek.
Cutting it off at the creek. And at this time, I would ask Mister Hill to come up and elaborate a little bit more on his reasons for requesting the rezoning.
Yes, thank you for taking your time to hear my request to, uh, lower the building restrictions. Uh, before the building crisis hit, we were going planning on building three stick built homes there. But due to the cost of lumber and fuel and all the other amenities that go along with building a home, my sons are not able to, uh, build a stick built home. My oldest son, which y'all saw come pick up his granddaughters, he is a police officer, a single dad here in Lexington. Uh, my wife provides twenty, well, twelve hour day shift, uh, childcare for the grandkids four and five days a week. Uh, currently, we do live right next to each other, but it, uh, that was the purpose of building, buying the property and putting the two sons on the front. My youngest son is a hundred percent disabled veteran as well. Andy, my, uh, oldest son is a veteran as well also. So we wanted to try to do a little family farm, uh, there together so that we could all look after each other. Uh, my youngest son also has a service dog and he is currently enrolled in school. And because he's taking fabrication at Forsyth Tech, he's not able to take the dog with him. So my wife has to go over there a couple, three days a week, depending on what his schedule is every quarter and walk the dog. Uh, but she can't stay locked up for twelve hours at a time. We're trying to keep the girls in the Tyro School District. The oldest one was already enrolled in Tyro whenever, uh, my son and his wife split. And so she wanted to stay in Tyro, so this is the only piece of property we could find that would accommodate what we were looking for, what we need as a family. Uh, also, my wife and I, we're all all getting older every day and, uh, we also know how, uh, we, uh, have to have assistance as we do get older. So that was also the purpose of having that family, uh, land to to grow up on, uh, for the, for the granddaughters to grow up on. So, um, again, this is a double wides on a permanent foundation. And, uh, with your permission, I would, uh, please request it be dropped.
You live on thirty-six, is that correct, Mr. Hill?
Sir.
You lot thirty-six, that's where you live at?
Yes, yes, sir, that's correct. We'll live on thirty-six. Uh, there's two creeks, uh, we were going to put the house at the back and I talked with my grader and go and put in the driveway to the far north. And crossing the two creeks was going to be a, a expensive, large amount of money to go, like twenty or thirty thousand dollars just to cross the two creeks. Uh, to accommodate a four foot tile and probably four or five of those are wide on both pieces of the creek. So it was, it was going to be an astronomical amount of money and I was like, well, we can't do that. So we elected to stay on the front side.
Okay, is anybody having question, Mr. Hill?
Just understand, it's not a mobile home park, Mr. Hill, it's you and your family.
No, sir.
Okay, okay.
He's going to build a pond and roses.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Thank you.
Okay, is, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this request?
We're good for the time being, sir, yeah.
Really, really, I don't have any big objections since I found out it was a modular or a double wide. If it's underpinned and looks neat, we own the land next to it. And, uh, I have had one run in with, uh, a neighbor and and I, I really want to be good neighbor. I believe in that. But, uh, uh, we went through a zoning and he was supposed to put a border and he didn't put a border. And I had a, a road, the road that goes back to her property.
Which, which lot's yours, sir?
Uh huh.
Which lot do you live on?
Which block?
Yeah, thirty, which lot?
It, it's be north of the.
Is not either one of those numbers listed there?
There.
Right there, thirty-eight A?
Right. Goes all the way back. And the same problem with the creek. But, uh, then the neighbor has a duplexes in there and I went to the, uh, zoning and approved the zoning. And he was supposed to put up, uh, trees or hedges to block the dirt and et cetera. But he did not and there's a wagon road, I call it. It's a wood road, thirty wood, thirty foot right away. And it was solid and I had some trucks in there because they did some, uh, select cutting of wood. And they got dirt on the highway. And he did not call me. He called the Highway Patrol and the DOT, uh, DOT. And they came out and then I had to have over a thousand dollars worth of gravel hauls in there. And it was because of his dirt that washed over into the road. But anyway, I don't think I'll have a problem with, with these people. I really, uh, I really think they, they're going to be good. And I would, uh, with the land beside of it and with grandchildren and maybe great grandchildren, I, I don't want them down on the property because I don't need a lawsuit with, with someone getting hurt. And, uh, but, uh, I do understand his problem. I understand his problem with the creeks back there. It's not a good way because it's a twenty foot out, a twenty-five foot, uh, inlet at the back or easement. But I don't know if they're landlocked or not, really. But, uh, and it covers his too. I don't know if he realizes that or not. But anyway, we'll go along with it.
Just a quick, just a quick question.
Okay.
Now, it's, it's, it's brought up in this hearing, the only reason I'm bringing it to your attention.
Yes, sir.
When we previously approved of the zoning for those duplexes, I think you said it was.
Yeah.
Was there, was there stipulations that we approved on that as far as buffering?
That happened in twenty sixteen by Mr. Jeff Bonham. It's a general district request, so there's no conditional use on that.
No conditional use, okay.
So we legally could not, um, we legally could not make him put the buffer in. He ma, and I, I was, I don't remember the, the public hearing, so I don't know what Mr. Bonham said at that, at that hearing. If he said something along those lines, it would have been, um, up to him to be a good neighbor and follow through with it. But I, like I said, I, I wasn't there.
Would you have any way of checking into that?
I, I could, I could check into the minutes.
And if we get back with Mr. Say, I was just trying to get, ask your, sir, because I understand what you're saying.
I'd appreciate that because he did agree to put a buffer. And Guy knew that and Guy was going to, uh, come back on it and he never did, really.
Well, I, I can also.
This occurred before, uh, the buffer, well, the buffer hasn't been put up. And it occurred. And, uh, uh, you know, I just don't think it was a, a nice.
Mr. Saint.
I was nice to him in the beginning on the zoning, okay? And, you know, he should have followed too.
Mr. Saint, is it Saint correct? Did I say it right? Is your last name Saint?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what, leading him, just look into it and if there's something that's within that, they'll, they'll give you a call back. But I wanted to make sure before you left today that they were aware and see if they could do anything on that.
And I, I do want to let you know that the, the manufactured homes will be masonry underpinned. That's a requirement of the, of this RA one district. The RA two doesn't require that, but the RA one does.
Well, that's the one reason I came to the meeting because I did not, I'm, I'm a little stupid on that stuff. I'm old and not smart, but, uh, I did not know if the RA one was an underpinned.
It, it requires masonry.
And not a single wide. I, I did not want single wide.
Single wides are not allowed in the RA one.
Right. One, one quick question, Mr. Saint, the, the problem you talked about with mud in the road and this, this, that had nothing to do with Mr. Hill at all, right?
No, no, nothing at all. And like I say, I, it just, it just turned from a good neighbor to a neighbor that.
Put a bad taste in your mouth.
Because it costs me a thousand dollars to have gravel put in there.
Yeah, that's a bad taste.
A little bit of dirt in the road, really.
Yeah, put a bad taste in your mouth. I don't stand that. See if he can find anything on that.
Would you state your, your full name for the record, Mr. Saint?
Carlton.
Carlton.
Wade Saint Senior.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
And the property is in Ruth's Saint.
Uh. I, I, yes, sir, revocable trust. Can we get your phone number if you don't mind giving it?
Uh, three, three, six.
You want to write it down, sir, instead of.
Yeah, yeah.
Instead of that, here, write it down and give it to our meeting, you might have everybody calling you.
That's true.
That's right.
What's heck on that?
Okay, Mr. Hill, you got anything you want to say?
Yes, sir, I just want to, uh, add one thing, uh, the right of way he's talking about actually, uh, is fifteen feet on my property as well. So I share that, I share that right of way.
So we got thirty feet.
Right, there's a thirty foot easement there and the pin is about in the middle, if you could, if you could zone, zoom it in, the pin's about in the middle of the driveway. And Mr. Bonham put the tile within about six or eight inches of the property line, which is what I would have done as well, you know, yeah.
You were talking about the old property line, I mean, the old road that goes by to me.
Yeah, that goes back to you.
It's been in there.
Oh, has it? Okay.
It's been in there and it's a thirty foot right of way.
Okay.
Now, he has got his yard comes out and that's a lead for the mud. Fifty yards out and it's over one hundred fifteen foot on the hill.
Yeah.
So if you go across it, you're going across a muddy yard where before it was a wagon road and it was topsoil and roots and everything.
It was dirty.
In those, right.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Hill.
You're welcome.
Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Uh. Go ahead. You guys. Is anyone else want to speak in favor of or in opposition to the request? Okay. Mr. Crook, what is, uh, you got something to ask him or? Okay, Mr. Crook, what is staff recommendation for this request?
Staff's going to recommend approval, Mr. Chairman, based on the fact that there are differing housing types. We've got RA two here, the property is already contiguous to RA one and we feel like some masonry underpinned, double wide manufactured homes will, will not, uh, will, will fit right into the neighborhood. And also, the, uh, Davidson County Land Development Plan promotes, um, residential development in this area. Thank you, Mr. Saint. Uh, and, and we'd recommend approval and request that you, uh, adopt a statement of consistency, please.
Any further discussion by the board? Now, I declare the public hearing closed and I have a motion second to either approve or deny the rezoning request and to adopt the resolutional statement of consistency.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
We got a second. Cast your vote.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of seven years.
Congratulations, Mr. Miss Hill. I'm telling you, walking that dog gets no picnic. I've got something to walk. I know what that is. That's going to help you out a lot. Chuck knows what that is, doesn't he, Chuck? Okay. Text amendments, lot sizes, zoning subdivision and watershed, I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Leonard, will you introduce this item, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for this time. This is a topic that we have been talking about for some time. It's a very important topic. Um, you know, I know that when people mention lot sizes and changes to lot sizes, they may not realize, but a change in lot size can affect every property owner in this county. It affects the value of their property and it impacts those who are living in the county that may have a certain quality of life. And whenever a development comes into their neighborhood, it impacts that neighborhood, obviously. And so it, the increase in or, or the change in lot sizes, uh, can certainly impact everyone. So therefore, before I just, uh, ask for anyone that wants to speak, I would like the board to indulge me for a few minutes so that I can give you some more background information. I feel it's my job to try to introduce this as much as I can, to give you a background of what brought us here and what we see as a staff. And then as we turn it over to the public and as the public in, the public, uh, hearing is closed, I would like to ask, uh, permission to come back and explain the recommendation from the planning board at that time as well as the staff's recommendation, if at that time the board feels that is necessary for, for me to do so. So with that being said, I would like to, uh, get into a little bit of a background discussion, uh, letting us know where, where we are and why we're here tonight. I took some data, uh, from a, from my own records for the past three years, from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, with the hot housing market that we have had. Davidson County has approved about thirty subdivisions during that three year period of time. With the lots that you see, about fifteen hundred and fifty lots that we have approved, some through this board, the majority through our planning board. Now, this is a very high amount of development that you, you may see here and I actually, I wanted to compare it to times in the past. And I had to go back to the year of two thousand, two thousand to two thousand and two, where we actually approved eighteen hundred lots. where we actually approved eighteen hundred lots during that three-year stint. But it was also done under sixty-one subdivisions that we did in that those three years. So the difference is, it, there's maybe a closer, uh, difference with the, the lots that we approved. But you'll see, we did it in half the subdivisions in this three-year, uh, period more than twenty years ago. That typically tells me that the lots and sub, or the subdivisions we are approving now are larger in size. So we're actually in, we're, twenty years ago, uh, the lots were, you know, they, they more or less stayed around fifteen to twenty-five. Now we have some large ones. So with that, we know that development has come and it has taken place, uh, quite drastically in the last three years, which calls this board to have a discussion of, are we allowing too many lots, too many homes, uh, for our infrastructure and what we, uh, for what we have and what we want in this county? So when we did that, we started talking about lot sizes. Can a change in lot size affect the numbers that we're seeing? And of course, if our, if our concern is truly the number of houses that are being built, then the only way to alter that or to slow it down is by increasing lot sizes. That's the only way that we can, uh, decrease the number of rooftops. So with the next slide, I wanted to show you one that we've looked at before, showing a subdivision over in the Thomasville area that has, you know, ironically enough, uh, lots that encapsulate both the twenty thousand, thirty thousand, and forty thousand square feet. To give you an idea of what it looks like, uh, from an aerial view of the half-acre lots that we now have versus what it would look like in a thirty thousand square foot lot and a forty thousand. Obviously, you can see the di- the difference in depth, some of it in width. But the homes don't change that drastically from one to the other. It's just that the lots get in, in, incre- they increase in size and lower the, the number of homes. To give you a further example, if this twenty thousand square foot subdivision had moved up just to thirty, all of these depths are right at two hundred feet. It worked out perfectly for this developer. He could get four rows of houses at two hundred feet of depth, one hundred feet of width, and he was able to maximize his density. Just going to, from twenty to thirty would back these lines up another hundred feet, would totally wipe out this row of houses. Everything would be readjusted to make, uh, to, to make it work. Which means that when you go up into lot size increase, you're basically taking a handful of homes that could have been built and taking them out of the equation and out of the picture. Um, now, when, when that takes place, we then look, well, well, what kind of product do we have now? We know that right now in Davidson County, countywide, watershed, non-watershed, it's half acre. It's twenty thousand square feet. Uh, we made that change back in twenty fifteen. And because of that, we have subdivisions out there that your planning board approves. And to give you an example of what a twenty thousand square foot subdivision is looking like, this is one called Maple Leaf up in the Abbott's Creek area. And you can tell that each one of these lots have a hundred feet of, of width. And they're all built across from each other. There seems to be, uh, uh, spacing. Whether you approve of the spacing or not, it gives you an idea of what the houses look like on your typical twenty thousand square feet that we're seeing today. All those lots that we were approving or that I showed on the last slide of, of how fifteen hundred lots, this is kind of what you're seeing in the regular subdivisions. If we go to a second one, this is, uh, Sedona, which is off of Hegy Drive. This is a twenty thousand square foot lot subdivision. You can tell that the homes are built thirty feet off the road. Uh, there's spacing. They're still built on the same pads that, uh, that other developments are being built on. But you get an idea of how these are done. Well, is that the only type of development we have in Davidson County, just regular subdivisions? No, it's, well, there are planned communities that this board has the authority to approve or deny. And I wanted to give an example of the, what we consider one of our jewels in the county. This is the Meadowlands. I picked this picture not because I think that the Meadowlands can go into every area of the county and that every development can become a, a Meadowlands. But I wanted to show the difference here, that in this development, this planned community, these lots that you see, and we never hear any complaints out of these types of developments, these lots are anywhere from twelve to fifteen thousand square feet in size. Now, that's even smaller than what we have. It is on public sewer. But you can see that the housing is a little different from one to the other. There's intermixing of trees and landscaping. We got sidewalks, curb and gutter. Everyone loves the Meadowlands. Everyone wants to live in the Meadowlands, but they're small lots. So with that, we go to another planned development. What is the one that we call Meadowfield off of Frybridge Road? Meadowfield comes off of the main road and offers townhome development where you have, uh, for what we call the townhome ro- row, uh, housing. Then you have quadruplexes where each of those are townhomes with a courtyard in between. So you have one style of housing. You've got these single-family houses that are on about ten thousand square feet of land. But then as you go further, you get into twin housing for a third type of housing stock that planned developments can, uh, provide. And they've got some amenities with a pool and clubhouse and things of this nature. So these are our planned developments that we've typically liked and enjoyed and, uh, because of what product they produce. So everything is going fine, but something took place in twenty fifteen. Twenty fifteen was a monumental year for development because here in Davidson County, we had just come out of a five-year stint of nothing going on from the recession. Two thousand and eight, he had and everything shut down and we didn't do a subdivision for five years. And the Board of Commissioners at twenty fifteen decided that they wanted to make a change on the lot size request. Uh, where it was at forty thousand square feet in the watershed and thirty thousand outside the watershed, uh, the board voted to go twenty thousand countywide, blanket wide, twenty thousand from one side to the other in hopes to attract development, which they at that time had stopped. Also, in twenty fifteen, in Raleigh, um, the legislature approved a general statute, which is one sixty D seven oh two subsection B, that basically told all counties and cities that you cannot regulate how a development or how a home is to look. You cannot regulate the design of the home. You cannot regulate the exterior veneer of the home. You can only regulate the position of the home on the property. So with that and the change, uh, with, and also with two thousand and eight's recession, uh, a new developer came into the, the county. We call these the national track builders and, and what we got out of this was a different type of planned community. So we went from what we see in Meadowfield and the Meadowlands to what we have in this particular development off of Hegy Drive. Uh, in this, uh, way, we, um, have lots that are only sixty-five feet wide. And we have a different type of development where masquerading occurs. You have slabs and you have a housing stock that is basically put side by side to maximize the level or the degree of, of homes that you can build. Uh, another depiction of this, uh, this is once again, an idea of the current trend in our, uh, developmental pattern through these developments or through these builders, I should say. With that, you can also, uh, understand as we go further and, and look at it from a street view, you can see the backs of the homes here, that, uh, there's not a whole lot of creativity left. There's not a whole lot of design. And with that, you basically find out that because we can't regulate the design, you may wind up with six or seven homes that all are the same style, maybe just a slight difference in the color. And I ask myself at that point, is that why I'm hearing from phone, from members of the public and from commissioners and others that are frustrated with what they're seeing? Is it a lot size problem that we need to correct? Is it a product problem that we need to correct? Is it both? And that's why we have spent the last year trying to analyze this the best we can. The planning board talking about this on several occasions. And, uh, and you have their recommendation in front of you, but we're going to, uh, continue to talk. Now with this, the way it is, it looks, um, not every, the same development that we were looking at. A couple more pictures. These are not small homes. They're good-sized homes. It's just that instead of being further off the road, the design has changed. They're closer to the road and they're right on top of each other. And then there's just a different look with the development. So with that background, I wanted to show two final slides because there are other factors involved. And that's what's caused us a little bit of the delay in time, is there's other factors when you're looking at raising lot sizes, try, to try to fix a problem that we believe is, is apparent. Um, we also look at, I showed you this some time ago. This is a depiction of the current school capacities that, all of our schools that are over eighty-five percent capacity where they're located. Uh, you'll see the majority of them are up in the northern part of the county. This is not new to us. This is something that we've expected and known. Uh, we do have over in the West Davidson area, Tyro Middle, West High, and then Central Middle. These schools are the ones that are currently over eighty-five percent capacity. So that's a factor. That's an issue that we need to look at. And then the final photo is one that I wanted to kind of give an overview of the county and the other factors that we've used in the past to determine what is appropriate lot size. We've used watershed areas because they're already predetermined areas. We already know that there's vulnerabilities in these areas, not only for water protection, but these, as you notice, are also the areas with the highest capacity schools. We also have public sewer available up there. Whereas where we have now, all the Lexington lines that we have are no longer of use or benefit for developers around Lexington. So that plays a role because where they could apply for these planned communities down in the Lexington area, they really can't until new sewer lines are created. Uh, so with that, I wanna, uh, leave that introduction and allow the public to say their piece and answer any question you may have. But when it's over, I wanna come back and ask the board or to give me some more time just to go over the, the recommendation from the planning board as well as the staff to try to give you some, some indication of where we are with this. Um, I didn't read the legal mainly for saving of times, but the legal advertisement, which has been advertised two times this month, does indicate that the purpose of tonight is to hold a public hearing to raise the public, uh, to, to raise the, the lot size countywide from twenty thousand square feet to thirty thousand square feet countywide. Now, I want to remind the board that's well aware of this. You have the right and the privilege to approve that as it's written. You have the right to deny it as it's written. Or you have the right to modify and alter that and do with it as you choose and vote on whatever comes out of this meeting. So with that, I'll answer any question you may have and then relinquish the podium.
That's not the complete recommendation that you're going to present to us?
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Good job. Okay. Any question by the board from Mr. Leonard? All right. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this suggested changes?
Evening, gentlemen. Great big back and forth meeting.
Yes, sir.
Been thirty-eight years doing this. Uh, you did a fine presentation. I think you did, did a good, good job.
Sir, could you please state your name for the record?
Oh, my name is Steve Foster and I live at one thirty-five Harbor Drive in Lexington.
Harbor Drive.
Har- Harbor. H A R B U R. Drive. I have a number of people here from, came up tonight just to hear what was going on with this. Um, I think there's some things that probably you need to consider before you, about this lot size. Uh, my background in the past has been in city management. And we, especially down at the coast, I was at Oak Island and, and Topsail Island and, and also in the, in the interim, Min Hill over in, in Mecklenburg County. But I've run through a lot of this. I don't know exactly what the planning, haven't talked with the planning planner yet on this, just to see. But there are a few items I think that you really need to think and look at and, and look at and, uh, take into consideration. Uh, one of those things is, I guess the main thing is, the bigger lots that you have, the more flexibility that you have in how you can make the, make the, uh, house sit on the property. As he says, you can't consider anything except basically the size and location. But it does give you a lot more flexibility in, in how you do it. Uh, there's some things that, that you probably need to discuss. One of those would be surface water. And the more hard surface that you have out there, the more this floodwater or this, this water that comes up, you know, from high tides or floods, high tides at the beach. But it does, it's a real problem. It's a real problem, surface water. Uh, secondly, the increase in the size of the lots would improve the soil and sedimentation control. It would help out as far as where this water's channel to, where it's coming from. It gives more room on that lot to be able to handle sedimentation control issues. Um, vegetation removal, that's another problem that you have. Once these places are, are developed or, or, or those are graded, I should say, that, that's a problem. Uh, for some, let's see, if, for some places not on sewer, if you have a septic tank, this gives more of an area to look at where you can have to do a replacement field for it. And I feel like this is something that's important because Davidson County, as I understand it, doesn't have sewer in a lot of places right now. And you have a lot of septic tanks it's dependent on. If you don't have a replacement field for these areas, it's, it's a bad, it's somewhat of a bad situation as well, too. Also, uh, it increases the property value, these, these larger lots. The anecdotal evidence suggests that, uh, larger lots support larger homes, which translates into more revenue for the county by way of property taxes. And those are some of the areas that I, I see as problems for not increasing lot sizes. And, uh, I know in my experience that all of these ended up being problems at some point in time. Uh, especially down at the coast where you have saltwater and freshwater. And they would, and the federal government wouldn't allow you to pump, uh, freshwater into, into the ocean, if you can believe that, because it got caught behind the doom lines. And they would not allow that as a, uh, you know, permit it. So it was, it was detrimental to the environment. So. Anyway, those are some, those are some areas I feel like that, uh, the board needs to take a look at. And I appreciate them listening to me. Maybe you guys can address some of these issues, you know, larger lots. But anyway, bottom line is, if the county approves this, these houses are gonna be there for a long time and it could be a real headache. And it would probably help improve a lot of the problems that you're having, you know, even now. So, thank you.
Sir, would you indulge me and give me your opinion of what you were speaking of as far as lot sizes?
Oh, I was, I was thinking it was going from a half acre to, I mean, a half acre to three-quarter acre.
And what do you think the benefit or negligent of that is? Are you for the larger lot sizes?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, I think it'd be beneficial for the county. It would be something that you could probably, you know, how now is a real positive for the county going with, with that. So.
I just want to make sure I understood you right.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Randy Thomason. I'm Thomason Realty Group and Thomason Development at High Rock Lake. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. I hope Mr. Leonard or someone will be operating the board here because if you're gonna give me that clicker, Scott, I'll do like last week. Everybody will be hitting the wrong thing. So.
That one to move, that one to point. Move, point.
Okay. Well, we'll see how easy we can mess this up then. Very important topic. Already heard some, uh, discussions. Would love to address at some point in time. But, uh, for expediency, I'll, I'll, I'll keep my comments, uh, as I had intended, uh, at this moment. Um, I really do believe what we're here tonight for comes down to really three things. It comes down to preference, perception, and bias. Now, please, I don't want you to get upset when I say bias. I'm not necessarily meaning that in a negative, uh, tone. We, we all have our own preferences and biases and whatnot. And, uh, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's a bad thing. I mean, you know, I, I have a preference for a Ford over a Chevy. I like vanilla ice cream over strawberry. Nothing wrong with that. And our perceptions obviously are what we form, the opinions that we form from what we hear, see, or read. Uh, and obviously our biases, uh, are a combination of those items, if you will. Let me give you an example of what happened last week. I think we've got a lot of hoopla on the lot sizes, to be honest with you, that aren't necessarily rooted in good data. And that's part of my concern. Last week at the planning board meeting, there was a subdivision, there's more than one, but there was one in particular, uh, used by right. And there were a number of people that were here that really tore up over somebody that was gonna put a residential subdivision in their neighborhood. And I get it. I mean, I get the preference. I can tell you, I personally would rather, rather see a field than a house. I'd rather watch the cows than I would like I see, see townhomes where it is. So I get that. Where the train started running off the track then a little bit is when we got into perception. Because there were actually accusations made to the planning staff and the planning board that they were in cahoots or, or clickish, uh, with developers or surveyors or whatever it is and seemed to be overly friendly. Uh, and they basically were just some false accusations, to be honest with you. One lady even jumped up and said, "Our school's already at overcapacity and everybody's nodding their head and you got the mob mentality going and everything else." And one of the planning board members, of course, asked, "Mr. Leonard, you know, can you tell us what the capacity is at that school?" you tell us what the capacity is at that school?" And it was sixty-six percent. And the person had just stood up and said, "It wasn't overcrowded, subjectively, it was overcapacity." And that was not correct. And there's where we have a real problem. I think that we've got a lot of people coming out saying things and they're against it because they just don't like it. It really just comes down to that, and it's not supported by fact and it's not supported by data. And as I said, there's nothing wrong with preferences, perceptions, or biases, and I'll use bias because, I mean, I, I love my wife and kids more than anything in the world and I don't think there's anything wrong with saying I'm prejudiced in that respect, nothing wrong. The problem with any of these thought processes where they become an issue is if they're either illegal or they, you know, they impeach the freedom of other people's rights to their enjoyment, to their property. And all these people really didn't give out any good reasons except for just misinformation. So I did want to prepare something because I've heard some comments from Scott and gentlemen here on Harbor Drive, uh, that I would like to address, but again, I know time is not going to permit at this moment. Uh, so let me just start with saying, let's get, let's get away with some of the myths. And Scott, please forgive me, which one did you say? Do you mind just advancing my ask, you said I don't make a mistake? Yeah, the first graph you're looking here is actually the homes sale, because what we want to know is, are we building too many? You might not like what you're seeing, but I guess the first thing is, you know, if we've got too many homes, if we're overcrowding everything, if we've got more homes than we have demand, definitely we might have an issue that we need to address. This graph is going to go back to two thousand and three all the way up to twenty twenty-two. And what you're looking at in, in the green, uh, is Davidson County sales and the blue represents the entire triad. Without going through the whole thing real quick, let me hit some highlights. In January of oh-three, there were over twelve thousand two hundred and eighty-seven listings in the triad MLS. In Davidson County, there were eight hundred and eighteen. Now, that's in oh-three. You can look at this trend and see that it trended upward, oh-eight, oh-nine, two thousand and ten, in bad times, we had an oversupply, people were starting to lose their houses, we had a lot of houses on the market. Then they were starting to be absorbed around twelve, thirteen, fourteen. But the most interesting part, when you look at this graph, is when you jump over to July twenty-two, or you look anywhere in the last eighteen months, we are down to twenty-seven hundred and ninety-one listings in the entire triad multiple listing service. We are down to three hundred and fifty-eight homes in Davidson County on the market, and that includes houses, townhomes, condos, manufactured housing. That is a gross under supply product right there, I can tell you. If you look at this trend at any other time on the market, we would have had anywhere from eight hundred to fifteen hundred houses on the market, depending on what year you pick in, in that spectrum. So we are way low on the housing market. Next slide, Scott, is the median sales price of homes. Not surprising to you, only go back five years. We were at a hundred and twenty-nine thousand in Davidson County, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand in the triad. Today, we're at two sixty-nine and two seventy-seven. The median home price has doubled in the last five years, it's gone up thirty-nine, thirty-six percent in Davidson County in just the last two years. This is unsustainable. Next graph is the average days on market. Again, we can go back to oh-three, the good old days, wasn't unusual, you probably used to hear three to six months on the market was not uncommon back in the day, uh, and you can see that graph proves that out till you get down here to about two thousand and seventeen and we start dropping below forty. Right now, we're five and six days on the market, that's all the houses that's on the market, the average is five to six days on the market, and it has been that way for the last eighteen months. If you look at the next chart, it'll show the month's supply on the market. Again, in oh-four, nine, ten month supply we have. That's not technically healthy, that's not a healthy market, usually you want to have about five or six months, that's a surplus, really, and of course, you see in April two thousand and eleven, uh, again, probably at about the height of people losing their homes, if you will, we had eighteen, twenty month supply on the market. Today, we have a month and a half of supply on the market in Davidson County and it's been, and it's actually been under one month for about the last eighteen months. We are actually just now starting to see the curve go up and obviously, things are changing, I'll get to that in a moment. On the next slide, you'll see the sales prices, a percentage of list price. Again, back in the day, ninety-five, ninety-six percent was the norm that you'd get when you sold a house. And you, excuse me, you see again, in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, we'd fallen below ninety percent, not atypical then, again, market was tough then. Right now, we're sitting at a hundred point eight percent or a hundred and one point nine percent of list price, and that has happened for the last eighteen months where we have exceeded a hundred percent of list price. That's all houses, exist and whatnot, doesn't mean that they all did that, but when you averaged them all, we're above a hundred percent. That's got to tell you that our demand is ridiculous at the moment. The next one is the average sales price per square foot, not going to surprise anyone. Two thousand and seventeen, it was ninety, ninety-two dollars a foot, now it's a hundred and sixty-six, a hundred and sixty-seven dollars a foot, and those numbers are going to change in another about thirty days, because costs continue to rise. The next chart is from Bureau of Labor Statistics, twenty twenty-one housing needs in Davidson County. Houses affordable when it comprises no more than thirty percent of the family's budget. I can tell you that at least half the houses and rental properties I'm seeing right now far exceed that thirty percent threshold. And according to this, we have twenty-five percent of Davidson County residents are cost burden. Of that percentage, forty-two percent of renters have difficulty affording their homes, I'll show you that in a moment. Seventeen percent of homeowners have a difficulty of affording their homes, and this is giving you a fifty-seven-five area median income, which I question, I hadn't been able to find that number anywhere, the twenty twenty-one estimates are fifty, about fifty-two-five, so glad to hear that it's fifty-seven-five, I hope it continues to climb. Here's one of the best people I've ever had and seeing what people are paying for rent or paying for housing, but let me, let me start with the rent here. I just randomly picked the largest apartment complex I could think about that was in close proximity, the Reserve at Regent Center, you know, intersection, near the intersection of Old Salisbury Road and Business Eighty-five or, and near the hospital. Once you look at these rates, I never thought I'd see this in my lifetime. A one-bedroom, eight hundred and thirty-one square feet, fourteen hundred and twenty-five dollars a month, a two-bedroom, fifteen, thirty-five, I guess that's the bargain, because I'd definitely pay a few more dollars, and a three-bedroom at eighteen, forty-five. I'm seeing people paying two thousand to twenty-five hundred dollars a month for rent on houses that two years ago, I could have gotten them all in, hundred percent financing, nothing down, all in, thousand dollars a month, principal interest, taxes, and insurance. This is the worst affordability problem that I have ever seen. I mean, I really don't know what we're going to do about this. Uh, I will very quickly mention when we start talking about sizes of lots. As far as septic systems and whatnot, you can have a twenty thousand square foot lot and have better soil than four acre tract, so the size alone doesn't dictate your soils. Your storm runoff's going to be dictated by design, so that can be corrected. It doesn't say that just because you have a forty thousand square foot lot and you clear it all, somehow you're going to have less water runoff than from a twenty thousand square foot lot or from two twenty thousand square foot lots where you don't clear them all. So, my big concern right now with changing the lot sizes really does come down to affordability issue. We don't have the stock, we don't have the product. I think it's the worst time now we can put the brakes on. Inflation is not changing, interest rates are not changing. You guys have done a great job bringing in industry, but they're going to need houses to live in, whether that's rental, whether that's first-time home buyer, or whatever price point. We really do have that issue, so I just hope that when you're, when you're taking all the information in, uh, that you will consider it in the whole. I know it's really easy to look at a product and say, "I don't like that, I don't like the way that looks." But I'm sorry to say that, uh, we don't have someone like a Lewis Hubbard anymore. We don't have someone who has built some of the nicer subdivisions, who can take over Metalands that was Spelling at the time, by the way, when he took it over, uh, who built first-time home buyers' homes, who built midpoint homes, who built semi-custom homes, we don't have it, they're not there, there's no one to replace them. I understand where you would have heartburn, if you will, with some of the housing that you're seeing. Uh, certainly, we'd like to deliver a different product, I'd like to see a different product delivered, but I would, I would beg you, please, don't do anything that is going to hamper affordability any more than it is now, because it is really out of reach for way too many people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Randy.
Good evening, gentlemen. Ms. Watford. My name's Brad Coe. One of the core tenets of conservative belief is the right and value of individual property ownership. A portion of that right of ownership is the right to subdivide or sell and part or portion the property owned by the individual. Many conservatives also identify themselves as Christians. For those of you that do and have studied the Bible, you'll be familiar with the parable taught by Christ in Matthew, chapter twenty-five. He here tells the story of three servants giving varying amounts of money to care for while their master has gone away. Those who invest and multiply are rewarded, while the one who simply hides it is punished. These parables teach several principles that conservatives claim. Individual responsibility for bad behavior. Individual reward for good behavior. And third, that I'd apply to this meeting, the need to be responsible with the things that we are allowed and entrusted to care of while we're on this earth. It's not a stretch to apply these principles to the right of property ownership. And I would posit this evening that a conservative government will not unnecessarily limit the ability of an individual to maximize the value of their own property. I concede wholeheartedly that we must have both zoning and subdivision regulations, and why? Because not all individuals are either conservative on the one hand or Christian on the other, and therefore don't operate under the principle taught in Matthew, chapter seven, that we euphemistically call the golden rule. We're taught there to do unto others as you would have them do unto you. Without zoning and subdivision regulations, we would have automobile junkyards placed next to nice newly constructed homes that lack any form of buffer yards or screenings or setbacks or, and I just penciled this in, or perhaps even a poorly designed subdivision in the wrong place. So we must have zoning and subdivision regulations. We also have the principles taught in the Bible of man's relationship to nature outlined in the Book of Genesis. It's taught that man has dominion or authority over the earth or nature, but also a responsibility to care for it. All of these tenets are much at odds with modern liberalism, which teaches that the needs and desires often perceived and not real of society are greater than the value of the individual. Now, we call this socialism. That's the school of thought that gives rise to such thing as mandating, in essence, the perceived transition from gasoline to electric cars, because it's perceived as better for society. Or mandating, in effect, the transition to generation of electricity through what I consider technologically inferior methods of wind and solar, because it's perceived as better for the earth, which has become a thing to worship in and of itself. If we're not careful how we perceive with zoning and subdivision laws, we will limit the rights of individual property owners to achieve maximum profit and/or enjoyment from their lands. We will also, if we're not careful, limit the choice that prospectors, buyers have as to what type of home and how much land it sits on, to the detriment of capitalism and the free market, which are also core principles that conservatives claim. Examples, I want to buy a Ford F-150 gas motor, but society, because they perceive it's a better preference for public good, wants me in a Prius. Or I want to enjoy a nice steak, but society thinks that bovine flatulence and the energy input required to produce that steak is bad, they want me to eat beans instead. I juror this board act carefully in the modification. There are those that want to limit the rights of others to develop their property and profit from it purely because they prefer to look at it as it is. And I'll confess to you that twenty-five years ago, I might have been one of those people. And Randy Thomason just said, he, part of him, where'd you go, Randy? You know, sometimes he's one of those people, but that is socialism by definition. If we want to transfer, transfer a consequential portion of a landowner's value to the public simply because they believe they'd somehow deserve something that they haven't worked for and have no interest in, isn't that by definition a form of socialism or socialistic behavior? There are people that will stand up in a rezoning hearing and say, "Well, we want homes that cost this much over here next to us, or we want homes that cost that much over there next to us, and we don't want people in homes around us that aren't as nice." Remember Dr. Seuss? There were those that had one star and those that had two stars and they got in fight about it. There are words for that, they're not pleasant words, that mindset can be described as elitist, discriminatory, or perhaps prideful and prejudiced. When my wife and I met and got engaged some twelve years or so ago, wave at them, pig. She lived in a two-bedroom, one-bath home that was built in the forties and fifties and had been added on to, because it was the maximum of what she could afford and stay within her means. I believe we have a moral mandate to provide housing opportunities for all portions of the economic spectrum. Our current demographic for median sales price, I wrote down two fifty and I heard tonight, two sixty or seventy. I got mine out of triad business journal, so we're close. We should not adopt arbitrary policies which could drive home prices above the median and leave builders and developers freedom to market their product to the higher or lower ends of the spectrum if they so choose. While capitalism and conservatism cannot always offer a cure for every problem, I am firmly convicted that socialism and liberalism can and always do make societal problems worse. Public opinion is a poor metric by which to measure our actions. If public opinion were the highest morality, then I would need to be pleased with the politics and policies running rampant in Washington, DC, wouldn't I? Please proceed thoughtfully, carefully, in consideration of what we truly believe is right and wrong, rather than in the court of public opinion. For the third and last reference to scripture in this little soliloquy, I'm out on politics and public policy, I refer you to my favorite book of the Bible, James. One of the primary principles taught here is that ultimately, we are not measured by what we say we believe, but by whether we consistently act in accordance with what we say we believe. This speech is intended in no way to imply that any of you are not conservatives, I know the contrary to be correct. Christians encourage each other to daily examine their lives for the insidious encroachment of sin. It comes in quietly, it comes in in little bits and pieces, and if we don't examine ourselves daily, we become a slave to it in greater volume, greater control. In the same vein, we conservatives need to encourage each other and admonish each other against the barrage of liberal thought that the world throws at us every day. Turn on your television, open up your smartphone, we all know this, we tell this to each other. We're being hit with thinking which is not consistent with our conservative core beliefs. If we're not careful, we can become compromised and corrupted. I ask you to consider changes and regulations carefully. I ask you to consider changes in regulations carefully to make sure that any diminishment of individual rights, and I'm not here telling you that you don't have a right or that you should not make any changes. I am not saying that. I'm saying, please be careful so that any action you may take that diminishes the rights of individual property owners to maximize the value of their land is necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare and the values of other property owners. I thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight very much.
Brad, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I agree with you on about everything that you said. Even, even the industry that I'm in is regulated, okay? You mentioned the junkyard beside of a nice home, that there should be provisions there to protect that.
Yes, sir, I did.
That is exactly what you just stood up and preached against. That's telling the property owner what he can and what he can't do with his property, but it's for good reason. I do agree with you 100%. We need to be careful how we perceive.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Please understand, I did say unless it's necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of other property owners and their values. And on that, we have a, an obligation to have these regulations. Yes, sir.
And these discussions.
Yes, sir. Thank you much.
Thank you, Brad. Anyone else? Okay.
All right, now attention is speaking again, but I wanted to tell you something. I'm Allison Brandon. Spoke at the last meeting, spoke at the planning and zoning meeting. When there's new homes coming into Davison County, Davison County School System gets numbers of homes that's being built. The numbers that I gave y'all the last meeting that's documented, you can YouTube me and see it. Those are facts. Our schools are full. It does not include these houses that aren't built yet. 208 homes going up on Heggie Road, I don't think those numbers are in there. They average two kids per home, but Heggie Road looks like there might be eight kids living in a home. I know these schools and I know these daycare, uh, these preschools, they are booked because I have a granddaughter. I'm, they're trying to get her in and can't get on the list because it is so full. So for, for somebody to come across like the schools aren't full, the schools are full. So anybody can contact Davison County School System and get those numbers, because what I got up here and stated was facts.
We have a school board member in attendance, uh.
Where is he?
Don't put him on the spot.
I just wanted to let you know, I did not pull those numbers out of the air. They were facts.
Okay.
I'd also like to ask for y'all to increase the land size to 30,000 square feet going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chairman Commissioners, my name's Ryan Davis. A lot of y'all know me. Um, live here in Davison County, uh, born and raised here. Ever since, uh, heard about this lot size, uh, change, uh, heard about it, what, a year, year ago, Scott? Uh, he approached me about it. And, uh, when it first come up, and, uh, I've kept my same stance ever since then. And, uh, Scott really, uh, hit my stance tonight. Uh, we don't have a lot size problem. We have a development standards problem. Uh, when Scott's going through, um, those pictures earlier, I reference the Meadowlands all the time. You hear nobody complaining about the Meadowlands. You hear nobody complaining about good development. But what you do hear about is a site that your local developers didn't have a dog in the fight on. Uh, it's the site that everybody references to off of Heggie Road. What I'm going to lighten everybody on is, is where I'm saying we have a development standards problem is, is we allowed single-family homes to go through as townhomes essentially, patio homes. They're single-family. Townhome, go through Freeburg Village. You hear nobody complaining about that. Everybody loves it, same as Meadowlands. But what it allowed was is a developer found a loophole in that, in our development standards to get stuff through. Guys, we, we spend millions of dollars to recruit these businesses. We spend millions of dollars to invest in them. We continue to spend millions of dollars to invest in these businesses, and I don't have a problem with that. But what, what I do want us to do is, is the same as Brad said, is us to be educated about the way we make our changes. Not saying don't make a change, not saying we don't need to make changes, but to be educated on is how can we capitalize from these companies coming to our area? I don't, I don't think it's a smart business move to say, okay, we're going to recruit Egger. We're going to spend millions of dollars and millions of dollars and millions of dollars. We're going to give them all these tax breaks. But we're going to allow the people to live in Rowan County, spend their money in Rowan County. You know, let's go to the north side. Let's go to, you know, the new steel plant, Randolph County. They're sitting there, you know, they're getting ready to loosen their development requirements. Toyota's coming there. All these people are coming there. They're loosening them to keep the people living in the county to keep spending money in the county. I'm going to reiterate this. We don't, we do need to make some changes. But it's not in the lot size. It's not in the way things are done. You know, people want to govern, you know, y'all want to have say in what goes on when people come in for these rezoning requests. That's where you can say, hey, I want something to look like this. You want it rezoned to this, here's what it needs to look like. You know, if you want MXR, you want a max dense, I want curb and gutter, I want sidewalks. You can force these places to look like the Meadowlands if you do it the proper way in ordinances. Going back and, you know, I've heard a lot of these people say, I want these 30,000 square foot lots. I've heard it tonight. Move it to 30,000 square foot when they're living in a brand new house on a 20,000 square foot lot. So my question is, is the same as, you know, everybody else is, is if you can live on one, why can't anybody else? And the same as Randy said earlier, our average right now, a family brings in under $60,000 in Davison County. I've talked to some of y'all and I've heard y'all want to do what's best for the constituents living here. Raising the cost of housing is not going to fix it. When you go to a larger lot, it's just going to keep bringing outside people in because they're the only ones that can afford it. You know, Mr. Yates, he, he, he works in construction, putting roads in. He'll tell you, I mean, how much it's cost to put a road into what it was two years ago, pre-COVID. Going to these wider lots is not a fix to it. Let's get smart, put a committee together like I've proposed, and let's tackle this problem and come up with what's best for the county. We don't need to put a Band-Aid on a, you know, artery bleed. It's just going to keep bleeding. So, you know, my proposal is, is for the commissioners to look at things and say, all right, let's put a committee together. Ask staff to put it together, and let's tackle these problems and say, how can we best fix these? Let's look at our land use plan. Let's look at all this and say, where do we want our dense areas to be? Where do we want our undense areas to be? The same as other counties nearby that's hitting major, a lot more growth than we are, as in Chatham County, that five years ago, they were the same as Davison, very comparable. And now the northeast corner, they're hitting major growth, but if you ride through Chatham County in that northeast corner, you go, man, this looks great. It's because they tackled it and they put together a good plan and said, here's how we want it to be done. You know, you got planned communities that's bringing shopping centers in. You got all that. So I just think if we put a committee together and we tackle this problem, not saying don't make change. I'm not saying no changes need to be made. I'm just saying let's do it educatedly, not off false data that you hear people hollering, you know, and, and, you know, if we do have a school problem, let's tackle that too. You know, as the commissioners, it's y'all's place to tackle that, bringing in more employment. That sounds great for money, but we ain't fixing our school problem. But these houses, it costs no money out of y'all's pocket. But day one, that money rolls in. I guarantee if you run the numbers, the tax revenue, the new building has brought in a lot more money than Egger's brought in. It wasn't no money. I don't, you know, nobody says, hey, I want y'all to pay for our sewer line. I want you to pay for our roads. I want you to pay for all this. Oh, and by the way, I want tax incentives. These people start paying day one. And, you know, just like up in Forsyth County with Dale, they come in, got all them tax incentives. When they were done, there's a big empty building sitting up there. You don't see empty houses. So let's just be smart and say, you know, how can we tackle this and fix it? And let's move about it and, you know, let's, let's work on it in the right way so we can get more Meadowlands, so we can get more nicer developing, but for all price points. The same as, you know, what Randy, uh, spoke earlier, you know, somebody that, you know, build starter homes, you know, middle-class and luxury homes. I mean, you can do that, and we can do it wisely and smartly and move on about life, make Davison County better. That's all I have to say. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have something to say. Uh, you know, I heard, I heard a lot, and you can laugh, do whatever you want to, but here's where I'm at, okay? I'm tired of hearing about talking about being smart and all this kind of stuff when, when we've got issues out there that are, that are case in point. Here's, here's where I'm coming from. I've been told, now wait a minute, I've got the floor.
Oh, wait.
Wait a minute. Hold, both of you.
This is the audience.
Hold, 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 hold. I've got something I want to say.
I'm going to let you say what you want to say, but let's get to this portion here first, that I'm, I'll turn it over, let you say what you want to say.
Through the public here. And one thing I would like to say while we, to, uh, go with what he just said. Just for the record, we don't give these companies millions of dollars. Um, so I think that needs to be understood before that misinformation gets out there. Actually, the company Egger bought every piece of property, every acre that they set on out there. The only thing that we give them is, they give us a dollar for every, uh, every hundred, they give us 54 cent for every hundred dollars, uh, in value they have. We give them half of that 54 cent back for a period, I don't know, maybe it's seven years for Egger. So actually, we give them nothing. They give us their money. We give them a piece back. It's not a rebuttal part. I'm just saying it's.
That's a performance base.
Right. Now, no business since I've been here for 10 years, have we gave any money.
All right, let's see if there's anybody else here who wants to speak.
I just want to make, make sure.
Anybody else who wants to speak, either in favor of or in opposition?
Yeah, and I will be quick. I'm Justin Nifong. I spoke at, um, a meeting in front of planning a few weeks ago where the same issue was brought up. Um, and it, the question was presented a few weeks ago, 30,000-foot lot standards, how many subdivisions have been built in the last decade that actually meet that standard? Scott, I think you said, actually at that meeting, none. Um, I recall two that meet that standard. That'd be, um, Magnolia Ridge and Montreat, right? So I just want to point out, I, I do think that this change, and, and look, I'm on, I'm on the development side, but this change will end up being a significant prohibition on development. That may be what we want, right? I, I hear that from some members here, but it's not simple as, hey, make the lots bigger. It'll make nicer homes. We'll, we'll still have subdivisions going in and we'll like the product. The math will just completely fall apart at that point. So, um, I just want to point that out. I, I think if we go to these standards, it, it will substantially curtail development. And again, maybe that's what we want, but, um, it's not as simple as, hey, let's just make the lots bigger and this problem's going to go away. We may create a new problem when we do that. Okay.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Neil Mott Singer. I just want to say, uh, uh, I came, uh, to quote one of the, your former fellow commissioners. It's, uh, Chief, Mr. Billy Joe Keppley. This is the cheapest form of entertainment in Davison County. I, I must say, I need to come to more meetings because, uh, uh, I didn't know about, about these changes. Uh, and, uh, to a previous meeting, I learned I was getting a pay raise as a Board of Education member that I didn't know anything about. Uh, I would just like to say, uh, I think, uh, the school board has, uh, or the county schools has started providing you folks with information concerning what schools, where the developments are going and, and what percentage those schools are full. So I think y'all do have that. And I would say, you know, I know all of y'all realize that as these developments come, our schools will increase in numbers and, and at some point, they will be overcrowded, the ones that are not overcrowded. But thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chris, I want to hear what the staff recommendation is and then, uh, before I close, the public here and all of you, say your names. Anybody else? Say what you got.
One, one follow-up. I, I've transitioned over the years from land surveyor to land surveyor and developer. Many of you are aware of that. I, I, I've surveyed the Meadowlands. I've done every lot in there. Been around doing this quite a while, and we sometimes do overlook that there is value in home production and, and the labor department. Uh, if, I tried to come up with some numbers and I can't come up with any firm ones, but if we simply take the value of 250 homes, subtract the lot price and, and put an appropriate percentage on the labor cost of the construction, it's over a $10 million a year industry and labor paid to workers working in Davison County. Now, of course, not all of them live in Davison County, but many of them do. So it is a, a large economic driver of many things. I think single-family home construction, it, it may be the single biggest driver of our nation's economy because it doesn't just provide labor to the people that lay brick or pour footings or frame walls, but there are people that manufacture all the products that go into that home, not only in Davison County, some in Davison County. Much of our lumber goes to furniture that go in those homes, you know, appliances go in those homes. We've got a rebar manufacturer coming that makes rebar that's used in those footings for those homes as well as in commercial buildings. And we've got, uh, Egger who produces product that goes in furniture that goes in those homes. So it's a major economic driver, and please don't forget that part when you're considering this, what you do. Thank you much.
You said you estimate it being one in Davison County?
Over, you know, 200, 250 to 300 homes a year. Mr. Yates, if you use, if you take out the lot price, so you got a calculator there? I'm not holding one.
Yeah, I got one, but I'll just.
Let's do this together. Let's say 300 homes at $200,000 for the home, not the lot. Isn't that $60 million? Okay. Now, 30% of that being labor, you, you manufact, you manufacture, then you do, if 30% is labor, that's $18 million. That's a guess. Maybe it's only 20%. That's 100, that's, that's $12 million. It's not inconsequential.
I agree with that.
Thank you, sirs.
Okay, Mr. Leonard. Oh, anyone else? Okay, Mr. Leonard, if you would, uh, give staff recommendation for this?
Sir, Mr. Chairman, um, obviously, from a staff perspective, for years, we've dealt with developers, realtors, surveyors, and the pu, general public, school board members. Uh, so we, we feel like we've got a good grasp on every issue, which makes it tough to try to compromise and make something, uh, come out to where everyone is pleased. It's not going to happen. But what we do understand is that for a history, we have some history to fall back on to, and we know that development has changed over the times. But when the planning board got together, and they are here again, they are the ones who approve most of these subdivisions. They're the ones who hear from the public who come in almost routinely and say that we don't want this. We understand it. Uh, the planning board felt, as far as their recommendation, that this issue was so, had so many tentacles in it that they would like to spend some time, uh, to look into what is the true nature of our school situation? What are the areas as far as sewer availability versus lack of sewer? How does the watershed play a role in this? Uh, they, they also believe that maybe a, a committee that could get together and talk about these issues may allow them to have a better understanding of the best way to go forward. However, they fully understood that our current MXRs, uh, our planned communities were issues that they did not like at current, and they did want to make a recommendation to change our current MXR in the zoning ordinance, which it basically, right now, if you have an MXR, you're allowed to build on lots that are only 65 feet wide. Uh, some of the photographs that I showed you earlier indicated that very thing, and they believe that when, when we changed it from, it used to be 90 in the, in the MXRs. and they believe that when, when we changed it from, it used to be ninety in the, in the MXRs, but we changed it to seventy-five, then sixty-five, with the assumption that the reason we were doing that is because we would preserve more open space. And that hasn't generally, um, been something that the planning board feels that they have seen. So what they would like to propose is to change the MXR minimum width from sixty-five feet to ninety feet wide, and that is, uh, that ninety feet is because, right now, in Davidson County, if you have public sewer, which all MXRs have to have, you're allowed to have a ninety-foot width, whether, or, as if you're, if you're on a septic tank, it goes to one-hundred. So with that ninety feet of public sewer, they are willing to go ahead and say that MXRs, let's spread it out to ninety feet instead of sixty-five. The second thing they'd like to do with MXR is they would like to decrease the, the density. Right now, you're allowed to have three dwellings, uh, per acre in an MXR that is not in the protected watershed district, which I will continue to refer to this map, uh, throughout my, my speech here because our, our county sewer line is inside of the watershed areas. Now, that already determines that you can only have two dwellings per acre. But this would include any area outside of the watershed that may have public sewer in the future. They would like to bring the, uh, the density down. The third thing is that each development must provide at least two different housing options, such as detached, single-family or, or in-town homes. They believe that this has been something of an abuse in the past where the, the original intent of an MXR, a planned development, a mixed-use development, was to offer various styles of housing, and what it has, what we, what we have seen recently, most recently, is the same type of single-family housing only utilizing the sixty-five feet to benefit the builder with the, the, the number of lots and how they build. Now, we don't see different various styles, we don't see amenities like we used to, things of this nature. So, uh, the planning board would like to recommend those three things as far as a change, uh, in the current zoning ordinance for MXR. In addition to that, they would like to have some extra time to possibly have a couple of members on a committee to further look at the other intangible factors, so that they could make a, a, a better decision on the actual lot size debate. Now, the Commissioners have hired staff to look into this issue. It has been the desire of the board to raise lot sizes, that's what's on the agenda, that's what was legally advertised. And we, as a staff, looked into this, we wanted the planning board to have their own independent, uh, recommendations, so we stayed out of offering our own recommendation. But in a staff situation, if the board chooses to make a decision tonight and wants a recommendation from your staff on increasing it, what we would like to do is be, be, beginning with our history of what we know has worked in the past. Uh, from nineteen ninety-four to two thousand and fifteen, we had a watershed delineation of forty thousand square feet. Everywhere outside of that watershed, you were allowed to have thirty thousand square feet. And for the most part, during those twenty years or so, most of the development occurred up in the northern part of our county, which was in the watershed region. I gave you those figures of sixty-one developments that took place for a three-year period in two thousand. That was one of the heaviest periods we had on development, but it took place under that forty thousand square foot lot size requirement. What's different today, that wasn't there last year, is outside of those watershed areas, we're now seeing developments occur throughout the entire county. We have developments, I showed one time where little, little like, little dots everywhere where developments were occurring. This is something that's different now because we're, our pressures for development are occurring along the I-85 corridor, more so than just wanting to live near Clemens, Turnersville, and Winston. They're now wanting access to a highway to get to Charlotte and Raleigh, and this is where we're seeing the pressure as well. I'm getting phone calls from people living in South Carolina, wanting to know why they're getting letters from developers 'cause they have property on the interstate. So we understand and anticipate that pressure will come along those urbanized areas around cities of, of Lexington and Thomasville. Meaning that what do we do with this? How is there a compromise? We know the development cost is, is higher than it ever has been. We know that if we go to forty thousand square feet and thirty thousand square feet, some of the developers that have spoken here today will walk away from this county, we understand that. We believe that others may come back in because history shows us that that takes place. What we would like to offer as a, a substitute recommendation for discussion is to ask the, the change to go in our watershed districts to forty thousand square feet per lot by a density, by density. That would take care or hope to slow down the school population problems that we're having in our northern reaches, as well as the western part that feeds west Davidson. But inside this, this forty thousand square foot lot size requirement of watershed, allow on major subdivisions, anything that's over ten lots, to develop at twenty thousand square foot lot sizes. That cuts down on the amount of development that a developer has to put in it. You still have a hundred feet wide of, of the subdivision itself, the lots are at twenty thousand, but overall, you have taken the density away. Instead of on a fifty-acre track, instead of having a hundred houses, you're now having fifty, but it's on just a portion of that fifty acres, hoping to preserve the open space that we all are wanting to preserve and have for years and haven't been able to see as much of that. That was the alternative. So what do we do outside of the watershed? If we say forty thousand in the watershed, major developments can develop at a twenty thousand square foot lot size, but keep the density outside the watershed. We can go to thirty thousand or stay at twenty thousand, depending upon what happens in the next few years, to seeing what this demand for housing may do along that I-85 corridor, where some schools would actually benefit from having more houses. What we're hoping to do from a planning principle is force development in areas that can handle it better than the areas that it traditionally going to. So with that is a recommendation, we agree with the, the changes to the MXR that the planning board had. We do believe that that needs some changing. We also know that because of the lack of public sewer right now, MXR is not gonna be a very optimal choice for developers. Uh, but, right now, we would, we would offer, if the board's choice is to make a decision tonight and needs the staff to give a recommendation, that would be our recommendation for the lot size requirement, and then we concur with the planning board on the MXR. Be glad, I know that's confusing, and if I, I'd be glad to answer any question that you may have.
Let's, let's go back to the MXR first, and then we'll, we'll hash out the latter part, if that's okay? Um, now, here the, I mean, it sounds like the ninety-foot wide, that's good, the two houses per acre. Wha- what is the two option? Uh, what is, uh-
The purpose for that is that what we're seeing is, instead of having a true mixed-use townhomes, condos, single-family housing, maybe some re-, uh, retirees for, um, twin homes, things like that, we're seeing the same single-family house built over and over and over again and utilizing the sixty-five feet in the MXR to benefit the developer and the builder.
So does the two option really do anything? Or do you put a requirement on there that they have to have at least fifty percent of one option and fifty percent of the second option?
No, we haven't, we haven't put a, a percentage on what you have to have, we just need the two different options.
There's two options, but they can still build the same house throughout the whole-
Well, they can, but then they would have to add some other type of an option, whether it's townhomes, condominiums, things of this nature. What that's gonna do, Mr. Yates, is I believe it's going to, uh, it's going to push those who don't build like that out of the MXR category, and it's gonna bring in those developers who truly want an MXR, truly wanna mixed-use with amenities, dog park, walking trail, things like that. They're gonna see these two options and not think a thing of it, they had plans to do that anyway. But anyone that may be saying, we don't do two options, we do one thing, it'll knock them out of the MXR, and that was the thought.
The ninety-foot, right?
Yes, yes.
So if it was a true MXR, you'd actually go three options?
Uh, that, you could go as many as you choose, but we're asking for at least two, to get away from just the one type of house.
And these hot, MXR has to have sewer?
It does, it has to be at least ten acres in size and sewer.
Curbing or guttering or anything?
No, that is not a requirement right now, sidewalks, curb and guttering, uh, that, that is not a requirement. If we did, that would certainly add to the, uh, the aesthetic value of the development, but it would certainly take a hit on the development cost. And here again, that would, to, to make those changes would certainly be, uh, beautiful, but at the same time, we would, we would limit who would actually do an MXR.
So is two options good enough, planning board? That's not three?
We're trying to get away from the cookie cutters, is that what we're talking about?
That's the intent, yes, sir. We're trying to make-
Different colors, but everybody's house looks exactly the same.
Yes.
Yeah, that was not the intentions of the MXR.
No, and, and you know, we kept talking about, well, people are buying, if, if all you can buy is a red car, you're gonna own a red car. If that's all that is available, you're gonna buy a red car. You know, so that's the purpose of trying to, put, put some kind of character within our, our-
I like the ninety, 'cause-
I think we need to bump that up to three.
I think too, what we hear a lot of times in our local builders, which there's not many local builders left, we understand that, but that the national builders are typically ones who are, we're seeing that they just have one style of home that they like to bring in, and, you know, this may offer some competition from other developers who are more into the, uh, multiple types of fa-, um, housing stock. You have to have at least ten acres to even apply, in public sewer.
And it has to be contiguous, right? The ten acres, uh, contiguous?
Yes, yes, yes.
I wanna make sure we stay on that path too, with the contiguous, uh-
I understand, yes, the planning board has made that very clear to the staff as well.
So I'd be good with, uh, planning and zoning's recommendation with the three options instead of two. That'd be a, a good starting point, and if we get it wrong, we can take another bite at the apple later when we see that it's wrong. Are these better options?
How, I, I, I kind of like the idea of the committee. I mean, what could that hurt to, to talk about full capacity and sewer availability?
Well, that's gonna be on the second part, they, they done figured this, but, um-
But I, I like it.
So you're, you're saying the committee will come, will get together and come back with a lot of things, we're-
Well, they, they've already, the planning and zoning's already talked about this first one, is MXR.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, but I still think we probably need to do something with the lot size, and then let the planning and zoning, uh, open their committee up, and then they can come back to us later if they see we done something wrong with the, the lot sizes on the second part. Go with Scott's recommendation on the second part. Um, I ain't quite got you figured out on the, the forty thousand with the density, explain that to me again. Once we get the first one out the way-
Before we leave that-
Is everybody good with the first one?
No.
Okay.
Um, now, it's a whole lot easier to go with what the planning board recommendation, and if that doesn't affect it to go up to three, than it is to go to three, put the onus on the developer and cause some issues there, and then see it, and come back to two. From three.
They, they, they just said they didn't have an issue with it, so, they was good with three. I mean, I don't think that's gonna give any more of a burden to the developer.
One of the questions that'll come up inevitably is, when you talk about different housing styles, people will say, single-family, townhome, condo, that's the three that they know of. Now, if we can include as options, twin homes, those are technically townhomes that are joined together. If, if that's a separate option, then that's a fourth option. If there's a style of home, whether it's, um, um, I, I don't wanna say, if someone came to us and said, we've got starter homes versus, um, more higher-priced home, would that be a different option? If that's the type of openness that's agreed upon here, then, then three would not be a problem. But if it's, if, if our definition of a different style is just townhome, condo, or single-family, um, that's, that's squeezing that developer to say, you've gotta provide all three, uh, to meet the standard, and that's- but here again, if we broaden the definition, then it would be doable.
I wouldn't have any problem with that broadening, and, and looking at three.
Right. You say that'd breed, uh, more, better competition?
Well, that's what we're hoping, uh, we, we think that there's somewhat of a monopoly right now, and, and, and as long as the product is being sold, I don't think they're gonna change. And, um, you know, this may bring some, some amount of competition, where I, I don't know if it will or not, but that's the-
Mr. Chairman, I have a word. Can I speak?
Oh, you're gonna ask him a question?
I'm gonna talk to you, and everybody else can listen, if that'll work.
Yes.
Uh, so the, the, the big issue that I have with, with all of this is that it's a, it's a serious situation. And I know throughout this whole process, we've, you know, we've, you know, it's conservative values and socialism and all that's been brought up, and I, and I get that. And, uh, but when I, when I look at this, this is not just something out in the nebulous that I'm looking at. This is something that, it's a hard decision and it means a lot. I see on the developer's side, where if you have a property right here, that you should be able to use that to the, to the best of your knowledge. But then on this side, I see where a lot of folks don't see where we're coming from. I respect the school board, and I thank you, sir, I didn't mean to point you out, but I appreciate you coming up and, and you working with us, because there's not a member up here that doesn't care about our schools. And we wanna make sure that they have adequate school systems, and, and they have facilities that will meet their needs. Not only that, but we have adequately talked about EMS, and fire, and police, and making sure that we can ade-, adequately serve our communities. And as these, you know, I guess cookie cutter approaches show up, that just adds more to the sheriff, adds more to the fire marshal, adds more to our fire districts, adds more to EMS, and we're having issues right now, keeping up and, and staffing people. So these are things that not only is just a cookie cutter approach with development, these are things that's keeping me upright, right now. Things that this board has to face and make decisions right now to be able to, to serve what we have before we start building something else. So, when, when we talk about issues like this, and, uh, and I know it's easy to come up here and to think that these deci-, these decisions are easily made, but, you know, uh, when we're talking up here, all of these decisions are things that we're talking about and things that we care about. So, uh, i- it's not just hearing staff recommendation without you talking to the sheriff and EMS and figuring out, talking to the schools, we've done our homework. And, uh, I just wanted to convey that, because I think too many times, people think we make these decisions just off the cusp, but we've, we talked to the schools, we talked to our safety personnel, and we really wanna do what's best for the county as a whole. So that's all I wanted to say.
And, and just to reiterate it on a little bit, Brad and Justin, Brian, we care about our contractors.
Amen.
It's just, we're saddled with more than just building their development, you know, and it's not a, it's not easy. Uh, do you have any further?
No, I just wanted to, to say one last thing.
Okay. Go as far as you need to, I wanna hear it all.
I appreciate it, I, I did do some research on counties that I figured were, uh, facing the same pressure problems from, uh, either being on an interstate or having another city, a large city that's pulling people in. Because I do believe that the, a large, a large part of the people that are coming in are coming from out of state, other counties, they're moving in because of, something's attracting them, either an urbanized area or that interstate. So I've checked with Iredale County, Alamance, Johnston out near Raleigh, and of course Randolph, which is a kind of a sister county without the actual interstate running through it. But I noticed one trend with Alamance, Randolph, and Johnston, in all of their watershed areas, with all the pressures. Johnston is developing far more than we are, they're next to Raleigh, south of Raleigh. So the northern part of Johnston is getting all the Raleigh pressure. But even in that, their watershed areas are at forty thousand square feet. However, as you get closer to Raleigh, they are allowing you to go down to thirty and all the way to ten thousand square feet as you get close to Raleigh, within what they call their municipal area. Iredale's doing the same thing, they may have, uh, their watershed areas in the northern part of Iredale that they're preserving, but as you get closer to Concord, Kannaplis, those other places, they will allow you, as you get public sewer and water, they will allow you to go down to twelve thousand, eight thousand. There's a trend, Randolph is at forty thousand watershed countywide, but they, I've heard tonight and I've heard previously that they're making changes with the new developmental pressure they're receiving. Um, Alamance, forty thousand in watershed, twenty thousand outside of the watershed, as long as you have public sewer. If you get closer to Burlington and Greensboro, eight thousand, as long as you have sewer. The trend seems to be going, as you're going towards your urbanized areas with public services, allow the developers to- The trend seems to be going, as you're going towards your urbanized areas with public services, allow the developers to have a greater density, all right? We may not wanna do that here. We may not. I'm just kinda giving you educa- uh, um, knowledge about what other counties are doing. And realize too that a hundred years from now, when everything's developed, all the land's developed, how do we want it to look? And that's kind of what, what we're trying to plan for, for, you know, in, in, in the future. So that, when, when the staff gives a recommendation of saying forty thousand in our watersheds, we're trying to answer what we think is a, a, a problem area of too much in certain areas. Preserve some land, slow the number of houses being built and in the congested areas that are stretching our schools, our EMS, our fire departments. I've spoken to fire, uh, fire chiefs in some of these voluntary departments and you're right, they have trouble staffing these things. But give the developers their local people. If you wanna give them a chance, have them start looking more closely to the urbanized areas around Thomasville and Lexington and allow them to have more of a, a, the density option where that's why I'm saying that if, if from a staff perspective, we would be fine with forty thousand in the watershed, but retain the twenty thousand outside of the watershed. That may be a stretch, but that's from our standpoint to try to force them to look in the areas where the schools are not overwhelmed, where there is more, uh, uh, availability. Watershed down here, we have, um, Davidson Water cuts off somewhere down on Highway Eight, so everything here, you don't have much water pressure, infrastructure's low. So having a larger lot size there is not that, uh, problematic. These folks here have been in a forty thousand square foot lot size. Wahlburg's already at forty thousand and there's no development going on up there. And that's what they want, all right? Midway's at thirty thousand square feet inside the town. There's no development going on in Midway. I don't think we'll follow suit. I think the pressure is too great, uh, for developers to say, "Well, there's no more development in Davidson County." Uh, but I think it will happen, but if we allow the developer in these watershed districts to still develop, not the, the, keep the density, cut the density in half to where instead of having fifty lots, you're now at twenty-five lots, uh, inside of the watershed, but we're gonna let you do it on a smaller lot. So your costs for development go down. I know they're gonna say, "Well, the owner of the land still thinks his land's worth gold." The owner's gonna have to adjust. Uh, but the development cost goes down and it still allows a development to take place, but the schools are getting half the houses than they are now and these other things. Um, any other questions that you may have, I'll be glad to try to further explain.
If you go down to, to the twenty thousand, what size would the road front be on a required road front?
Twenty thousand be a hundred feet wide like it is today.
Just like it is.
Yes, we're, we're not advocating changing the width on regular subdivisions at all. It's mainly on the MXRs going from sixty-five to ninety.
I like that going to ninety. Uh, it's like you got a little stretch here that you put a house on and you're calling all this back here. You're, so I like the ninety.
Yes.
So what was a thirty thousand square foot? Was that for the rest of the county or now you're saying it's twenty?
Well, I, we were saying from, it was the board's decision or your, your initial desire was to go thirty countywide. Staff feels that we could, we could go back to twenty on the rest of the county that's not in the watershed because the watershed is still receiving the greatest pressure. Uh, but here again, that's, that's our recommendation. Uh, the board, uh, if you wanna go countywide with an increase in lot sizes, then thirty thousand would, we would recommend that would be the adequate way if you wanted to raise it countywide.
We. Come up to the podium, please. It's a public hearing, so you have to give your name and all.
My name is Monica Patel and this is just a thought. Uh, I come from Charlotte. I'm from Mecklenburg County, but I have a land over here. I live in a town ho- house, which is on a five thousand square feet. And my consideration is like, I've paid like close to two hundred and twenty thousand on my townhouse. It's an old one. And I just think once we give up like thirty thousand, the cost is gonna be burdened by the developers and it's gonna be very costly for other buyers to buy homes. Uh, and I'm a veteran, so I know how it is difficult for people with, from middle class to come and buy expensive homes. Cause the person who wants to sell the land, he's gonna sell it at a X, Y, Z price. It's gonna stay the same. But the, the cost is gonna be passed down to the ultimate consumer. So that's just a thought for everybody to keep in mind, you know, with whatever decision you all make, whether it's twenty thousand or thirty thousand. I think twenty thousand is still a decent based on the place I live in and I see, you know, uh, five thousand square feet. This is pretty much a big, uh, chunk of land. People could still live, live peacefully and let others also come and, uh, enjoy, uh, housing. So, thank you.
Okay. Okay, anything else, Scott? Okay, thank you. Uh, is there any further discussion by the board?
Me.
Fred?
Um, back in, some years ago, we went from forty thousand down to twenty thousand. There was some, uh, discussion at the time that we were going to give up a lot of the green space in the county. And that has happened as a result of going to twenty. If we stay at twenty, um, we're gonna still see some more development. The, I've had people from up in Midway and, and, uh, up in the northern part of the county saying that when they built up there, the, the place is just not like it was. There's just too much traffic, too much, uh, crowding. And I think that, um, I think that thirty thousand square foot, if you wanna go, if you wanna go toward the cities with less than thirty, that, that would be fine. But Seattle, Washington tried that with, with very bad results. So that was what, I forget what they called it at the time, but it was a popular, popular move and they did that and it didn't work out like they thought it was going to. But I, I'm, I'm for the thirty thousand lot size. The MSR sounds good. I like to, that, if we broaden that definition. Thank you.
Anything else?
We don't, we don't adjust sizes lots in the ETJ, do we?
No, sir. The ETJ is governed by the, the city.
Like I said, cities will continue to do what they're doing, so.
Yes, yes.
We're voting on everything up to the city limits pretty much, or the ETJ, ETJ as you.
Anybody?
Could I ask Scott to?
Sure.
To, once again, repeat your final recommendation on watershed versus outside versus inside, okay?
Inside the watershed, we're asking to go back to the forty thousand square foot density. And I say that because in that density, you are allowed to still build on a half of acre, twenty thousand square foot lot, but you're gonna have to preserve with half of your property, undisturbed or open space, because we are allowing you to do smaller amount of disturbance. So in a, in a watershed area, forty thousand square foot density, you got fifty acres, you get fifty houses instead of a hundred as you can now. But those fifty houses can be placed on a smaller footprint and you preserve more land. That's only for major subdivisions of over ten lots. So we're trying to satisfy the, the slowdown of the houses up in those areas. Outside of the watershed, we are promoting remaining at the twenty thousand level. Because I know that there was a, uh, the proposal was thirty thousand countywide. We're asking to go higher in the areas that are the most congested and retain the areas that, trying to force the development back into, to give incentives for developments to happen more around Lexington and Thomasville, um, Conrad Hill areas like that. So it'd be twenty thousand outside of the watershed, forty in.
I got one, one more question that a gentleman brought up about, um, septic tanks and replacement field.
Mm-hmm.
How does that fit in with the MSR and the twenty thousand out?
Well, the MXR would be on public sewer, so we'll take that out automatically. So with a regular subdivision, um, we've always understood that with twenty thousand square feet, that was enough room for a septic system repair area. The health department has routinely said that that is good. Now with that, we are noticing that with the subdivisions we're seeing now, more than twenty years ago, the land is not yielding the septic availability as it once was. So they're doing off, off-site, um, um, drain fields. The health department's working with them to do that. So you may own your lot here, but your drain field may be over here. We're seeing more of that. That wouldn't change just because you're having preserve. If you have a twenty thousand square foot lot and your septic tank's back in the non-disturbed area, that would be fine because there's no building or anything's gonna occur back there, but your drain field is back there. So it can be used for a drain field if need be to satisfy the needs for the health department, if, if that answered.
It, it, it does to some extent. We have a, a, an issue in the county anyway with la- a lot of the land unper- period.
Yes. That's another reason that, you know, it's, and, and these guys behind me will know better, but routinely, um, this has been one of our worst areas for percolation in the hasty area. I know I'm in, I live in Holly Grove and we have a rough area for, for percolation here. Routinely, the eastern part of the county has been somewhat, um, difficult to perk. So, you know, that's, that in itself will, um, you know, play a role in how lo- large the lot sizes will be. Um, even if we, if we do go twenty thousand or leave the twenty thousand, uh, the lot sizes will be dictated by the septic tanks, um, and their perkability.
The subdivisions that we, we would have coming forward, would that be the same lot size?
Yes, if they're not in the watershed, it would. And if they're in the watershed, you'd still see the same type of, um, lot-sized design. But what you would see differently is the overall common area that would be retained. Now, they can choose to do that in the homeowners association because someone's gonna have to pay taxes on that land. So they can keep, put that in the homeowners association. Let's say that fifty acres is being developed and you, uh, you, you just develop only twenty-five or thirty acres of that. The other twenty will either be left in a homeowners association that pays taxes, or you could take those twenty-five lots and five of those lots may be three or four acres apiece just to utilize that open space. Uh, so you may have a subdivision with twenty homes, uh, on, on half acres and five homes on three acres just to utilize that open space.
One, one of the issues that we, I guess, hear about more than anything else is water runoff.
Yes.
Um, as a result of a subdivision or something like that, running into existing homes, property. And we don't have floodplain management in our county as such, do we?
We don't have stormwater management, uh, no we don't. And this is another reason that I'm hoping that the preservation of open space would help eliminate that. Because most of the stormwater issues we find and see are up in this area where you're developing right next to another development that's been there twenty years. So with leaving this, uh, open space as much as we can, we're hoping to use that as a filtration area where some of the runoff will. Because when they develop this land, they're still gonna masquerade that first twenty-five acres and put them on slabs. But now you've got hopefully enough land to preserve to where it'll filter into that instead of pouring out. We're hoping that the development pattern will be, we, we only are gonna develop this portion of this property and leave the rest of it. Trees, fields, whatever, as a natural preservation. And we can even add that into the subdivision. Uh, you know, we can add that into the ordinance to say, "You must preserve that open space and, and not masquerade it, not eliminate, not pool table the thing."
Would that be part of the committee's discussion?
It certainly could. It certainly could. Um, and I, I know the manager has asked me to speak on an issue that could also be, if you, if you board wanted, if the board wanted to send this to a committee, uh, and how the roads are taken over by the state, how quickly we get these roads taken over by the state. We have in our subdivision ordinance right now a what we call a defects and maintenance guarantee where we could ask the developer for one year to make sure that he maintain, he or she maintains the road, uh, inside of that development until they get it taken over. Now, if the board wishes through a committee or whatever, we could change that wording where they have to post a bond that they may have to hold on to for years until the state actually takes the road over, but they're responsible for that. With, that's other language that we can add into the subdivision ordinance to try to help eliminate these developments, uh, that the roads are built to state standards, but once the builder comes in and buys all the lots, the developer, uh, may leave and, and the people have to turn, turn the roads over. I can say the developers that we have now are doing a, 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 a better job than in the past. They want their roads to be turned over and they are going through the process of getting these roads turned over. Uh, but we don't have anything in the ordinance that would make them post a bond. It's just a letter saying that we'll be there for a year to maintain it.
I, I think that would be a great idea, Scott. Living in Yautsia's Point, none of the roads down there can be turned over to the state because they're not built to state standards. So we're having to take care of all that ourselves, so.
Yes.
Through the HOA. So I, I think that would be a great idea, uh, the bond. And that way, it, it would have the, the, the developer to build those roads, uh, and make sure that they stay to state standards.
Yes, absolutely. And in defense of, of my department, during the Yautsia's Point, I believe that they wanted to initially build those, make it a private community and, and we still asked them to build it to state standards, but obviously the states looked at it and said it does not. So, um, we, uh, we're understanding that.
Okay, any further questions for Scott? Thank you, Scott. I declare the public hearing closed. And do you want to hear any motions or any discussion on the motions?
I'd like to talk to the planning board, uh, just for a second, whichever one of you guys, or both of you from the planning board. I wanna ask you about this, uh, forty thousand square foot inside the watershed with the de- with the density that Scott mentioned. And, uh, I'm a little concerned at this point about the twenty thousand square foot lot still out in the county. I'd probably like to go to thirty until the planning board could put their committee together. Uh, and y'all's committee, as far as I'm concerned, could consist of just planning board members or whoever y'all wanted to put on there that could come back and give us a recommendation, but, uh, what's y'all's thoughts?
I agree. Can, let me, can I make, I don't know if this is Scott. The MXR. Doesn't seem like anybody has any problem with that. Do we need to vote on that separately?
Yes.
Okay, they said, anybody have a motion on the, the MXR?
I make a motion.
To approve the, the, the.
The planning board recommendation with the increase on housing types to three.
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and to broaden the num-.
Broaden the definition of housing types, yes.
As amended.
And that's got the ninety-foot front.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second.
Nine of four, do you understand that motion?
She could piece it together, I'm sure.
I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure for clarification that we all understand what we're talking about here.
Yeah, we want it right.
Forgive me for interrupting.
No.
Are we supposed to understand all?
We want it right.
Just staff recommendation, the only, uh, alternate was, was three options instead of two.
It would be to approve the MXR, the planning board recommendation on MXR to increase the hu- housing types to three and broaden the definition of the housing types.
That's correct. And that does include the, the widening of the, the road width and, uh, uh, the three dwellings down to two dwellings per acre as, as, um, the recommendation of the planning board. So that, she is right.
And you can give her your recommendations.
And she's got the road front and all that, like you want it, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion?
We had a second.
We have a second. Cast your vote. Okay, Commissioner, uh, Yates, if you want to talk about this.
Did y'all understand my comment?
I, I think it's the wisest choice to put together a committee and come back on this, whether it's twenty, thirty. I think we agree on the watershed issue, but outside of watershed, I think respectfully, it, the wisest thing was to figure that out. Put some minds together and see what.
So you think thirty thousand square foot for a, for a time period is a bad decision until y'all can come back, uh, with something?
That's, that's the board's bridge, you know, which y'all come up with. I don't, I don't, I think we need to come up with something concrete for.
Cause y'all got a lot of other things to work on too. I've heard curb and gutter mentioned. I've heard storm sewer mentioned. I mean, you're talking about running up the cost of development. Then that's called run up the cost of development.
Yeah, we don't wanna do that.
And one of the things I'd like to see is, is talking about the forty thousand, using more open space, preserving from water runoff, uh.
On watershed areas?
No, outside of watershed.
You know, there's building, it's, space was lived that had control that water runoff, storm water, you know, having environment there. Uh, I know I talked to, uh, uh, Mr. Shale about the building down in Blue Canyon, uh, open land that he had there. I guess the best buildings that we have proved, uh, in the last couple of years. And one of the reasons is, uh, open space was preserved and there was dirt and, and it was runoff and it was, uh, looking at building to do. So, uh, just like, uh, the road situation, that's another thing that we need to sit down and discuss. There's, there's a lot of things that y'all talked about and we've already talked about that. We need to sit down and promote some solutions for it and bring it back to y'all. We need to sit down and promote some squishy support and bring it back to y'all's recommendation.
I agree.
I always wanted to talk about this budget issue, that, that is something that really needs to be discussed. We are, the community is very responsible for roads, that we need to discuss.
Yeah.
That's happened a lot over the years here in the county too. I get quite a few phone calls for that. But that would just be my recommendation and maybe they can come back to us in, in three months or six months, whenever it is, and, uh, give us our recommendation.
So, your recommendation is not to advance with this until we get a recommendation?
I'd say advance with everything, but move it to thirty thousand square foot, um.
Thirty.
And, uh, non watershed until they can figure out a better plan, um.
Sound a motion?
And see what the density is and what they think about it. So, exactly the way Scott explained it in the top portion, just thirty thousand square foot and everything outside of the watershed.
Let me ask this, Scott, cause I want to make sure I'm understanding something, okay? How would this, uh, how would this have changed that atrocity on Heggie Road up there? How would this have changed that?
Well, through the MXR now, instead of them, uh, building what they did, they would have to spread the buildings out. They would have to have.
That don't have sewer there?
It does, yes.
It does have, I didn't know that. Okay, I wonder how many they got, I think they got all of them in there.
And, um, they would widen it out to ninety feet instead of sixty-five.
I can see with the MXR, I'm sorry, I was thinking it was, I didn't know they had sewer there.
They did, and they would not be able to produce the same type housing throughout the development. They would have to offer different variables.
Three different.
Uh, and it would, uh, it, right now, it's already at two dwellings per acre. They're, they were fortunate enough to have over four hundred acres of land there, so, you know, that's how they were able to get, or two hundred and fifty acres, I think, that where they were able to get two dwellings per acre, but they are, uh, they are stacked in pretty, pretty tight and that, and that's because of the sixty-five feet.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't realize that was in the MXR, I forgot about that.
One other thing, can you, can you tell us, um, your recommendation or the planning board's recommendation is twenty thousand outside of the watershed?
Now, that's staff. The, the, the planning board did not recommend that. The planning board felt that there was, they didn't have enough information to set a lot size standard yet. So, they asked for the committee to come back to you with their recommendation for lot size. This was the staff recommendation on the forty and then the twenty outside. Uh, if the board wanted to make a decision tonight, you needed the staff to recommend, and that's where our staff recommendation came from tonight.
Yeah, I was just trying to get to why you made the recommendation for twenty as opposed to making it for thirty.
We, we believe that the twenty is, is more of the attraction for the developer to pull out of the forty area, give him the incentive to develop in areas that are traditionally not seeing developments to occur, to allow the, the more, more of a widespread of the development to occur in areas that traditionally hasn't seen it. That there's, the only way we could do that, we feel, is by, by putting such a restriction on the northern part and, and not changing anything on the rest, that would automatically, because they're driven to find, they, they believe that there's the demand everywhere. Everyone wants to live in the triad, so they believe there's demand. But if they can come down in areas where there is more opportunity for profit, then that's, that would be my, uh, advice, was to bring it down with the smaller lot sizes. I don't know if forty to thirty was enough incentive to pull them away from where the do, the greater demand is, which is where our most congested areas are.
But you think forty to twenty would be?
I think it would. I think that you'd see a, 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 a flight out of the northern part of the county into the central areas, but here again, I, I may be fooled. They're going to go where the demand is, but I think the demand is, the, the demand has changed and the, and, and I think that around the interstate is where you're going to see the most.
Yeah, and, and the, the staff has been looking at this for a year and getting statistics from.
Well, yeah, thi- this is really the staff looking at other counties, looking at the demand, hearing what we're hearing. We believe the pressure's still going to come to Davison County, but how do we want to incentivize the development? Where do we want it to go? And, and this would ring a bell. Now, it may be a bell that the board of commissioners don't like, because if it does, every, every developer in, in the county may say, zhoo, right here on Lexington, and it may not be what you want. And that's where I'm hearing that the thirty is more of a, hey, not that fast, let's, let's, let's slow up until we know more that, um, you know, this is going to pull the developer, if this is good or bad.
But you said you didn't think that forty to thirty would be enough of incentive for,
That's my opinion, yes.
I have, uh, may I ask a question? And this is for Scott and for Ted and any of y'all that wants to see. One of the recommendations was a committee of stakeholders to.
Yes.
To have this, okay. Is that suitable for the planning board as well as y'all deciding?
I can speak for myself that I, you know.
Stakeholders would be?
It, it would, and, and I think from my, when hearing the planning board, I'll certainly let them answer, um, it's my understanding that we would have several members of the planning board on it, possibly a commissioner, if the commissioner chose to sit on the committee, uh, it would be staff as well. We don't want to, um, involve, and I, I know this sounds bad, but we don't want the development community to be involved necessarily on the committee, because I feel like I know that their desires and what they're looking for, nor do we want on the committee someone who's just anti-growth totally, and, well, so we want to, we want to be able to have a committee, it's a small committee, that has been used to divi- to dealing with this developmental pattern so that we can s- speak to it clearly. It may only be five or six members, but we would bring in someone from the school administration building. We'd bring in Chris Johnson and say, Chris, let's sit down, where, what is, what's your ebb and flow in the, in enrollment? You know, what, what years are high and what years are low? And, and bring in people just to talk to us, and then we, as a planning, staff and board, would be that committee, it, it to be, in essence. The stakeholders would be those that would come in and give us information.
And that's the way it's got to be, so, I mean, they got to get together and figure out the fine details and.
Yes.
The planning zone deals with this all the time, um, so I think they need to put the final say on it.
Sure.
Okay, so, the, the direction is go forth with the committee, but, anybody want to make a motion on this watershed, non watershed?
I'll make a motion that we do for, do staff's recommendation, except do thirty thousand square foot, uh, outside the watershed.
Okay.
Until, until planning and zoning and, planning and zoning board get together and comes back with a different recommendation. Like Scott said, kind of hold it down for a minute till we can figure out what's the best thing to do.
So, the motion is forty thousand in watershed, thirty thousand in, outside of the watershed?
With the d- density that Scott.
Yes, with the density averaging where you can do half acre lots in your development.
Staff's recommendation, the only thing we changing is from twenty to thirty outside of the water district.
And that subject's changed based on?
Then, then, then planning and zoning and.
We can change it down a little. Yeah, okay, I've got a second?
We need, we're going to need to do this verbally, sir.
Okay.
We don't have any more, but.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion in the se- in a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. All right.
Yes, y'all need to discuss all the, like I say, I, I heard stormwater improvements, I heard curb and gutter, a lot of, just so the other commissioners know, some of that Meadowlands or whatever, that's curb and gutter, that stormwater, if you want that kind of look, then that's, uh, what it is.
And your motion also includes the formation of the committee as recommended.
Right, right.
We have a motion and a second to go into closed session.
Second.
Okay. That's good. That's going to be it.
Ted, that, that.
Yeah.
I'm ready.[470.81]